You have to press on that side.
I said you have a zipper on there.
They demoted. They demoted. Say what? I know I didn't. And then you gotta holler across the room.
No, I'm not hollering to go off the roof.
It sounded like you did.
You just heard.
Oh. David heard. Philip heard.
All right, good evening. Can you guys hear me in the back, in the way back? A little bit, pretty good? All right, I feel like I'm way away from the mic. Well, welcome to the regular business meeting of the KCPS Board of Directors. Thank you for coming out. This is gonna be an action-packed night like they always are here at our meeting, so we won't leave you disappointed. We'll have June call the roll.
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Buckner?
Here.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Just here one moment. Can't take all. Okay, Ms. Ford?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Woolsey?
Present.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
Some of.
All right, it's been moved in second. And June will you call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, thank you. All right, well, we'll start this evening off with our public comment, and we'll welcome Mr. Jason Roberts from AFT to the microphone. Welcome, Mr. Roberts. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. In the nearly eighty years that AFT has represented staff members in the Kansas City Public Schools, there is not a single time that we can think of where the president has spoken before the board on something positive. However, tonight, I intend to break that cycle. The response from this local board to the issues affecting our schools, students, staff in relation to COVID has been nothing less than stellar. Your devotion and dedication to the safety of our students and staff has not gone unnoticed. From a hybrid model to a virtual model to face and return to providing vaccinations, to ensuring PPE in all of our buildings, to the most recent MASH mandate, to the acceptance of the proposal for the use of PTO, the district and the board have showed absolute care and compassion for its employees and its students. Last month, I asked our members how they felt about requiring MASH for vaccinated and unvaccinated students and staff, and fifty-six percent said they support, twenty-nine opposed, and fourteen had no preference. That means that seventy percent did not have strong opposition or were in support of masking. When I asked how they felt Kansas City Public Schools had handled COVID, seventeen percent said excellent, forty-eight percent said good, twenty-four percent said fair, and zero point zero nine percent said poor. This means that sixty-five percent of our members believe that you have done either an excellent or a good job. This is a testimony to the decisions made by this board. On the ground, none of this would have been possible without Sarah Williams, who's been a fantastic and rational leader on behalf of mitigation strategies, as well as Lauren Brimes, the director of our nursing department, who has held together one of the most important units that I represent. Dr. Bedell has been a wonderful listening ear and a considerate superintendent, and Dr. Collier has embraced her new position to ensure that we're doing what's best for everyone involved. For the role that you play in keeping everyone safe, I simply use my time tonight to say thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right, Mr. Good, Chris Good with Ruby Jeans. You're up, sir. I expected you to jog to the mic. You'll have you'll you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to come before the board and introduce myself. We find ourselves about to commence into a very important partnership from our vantage point. I know many of you all through various capacities. I'm very fond of you all. I know what you guys do is very difficult. I started in KCPS a long time ago, before before I moved out south and we went through Hickman Mills. We've been, I came to Dr. Bedell a few years ago, two, three years ago, and I said, hey, got this idea. I think that these kids need cold-pressed juice. You put a salad in front of a kid, they might scoff and be like, ah, I'm not eating that. You put a fresh, vibrant, pink, green, red juice in front of a kid, we may have better results. We don't want to guess on that, and so we've worked with Jordan Gordon to say, we're gonna pilot this program and say, what do the kids think? What do they think of the juice? You know, did they eat breakfast that morning? Survey the kids. So I just come before you all to say thank you. This isn't, doesn't fix nutrition in these kids' lives and their families' lives, but it's a start. It's a start to put concentrated nutrients in their bodies from a locally grown company that's intentional, that's really genuine about what we do, and so I'm excited. I think it's a really big step. I think it's a progressive move by the school district to partner with us as a small business to ensure this pilot gets off successfully. So that's all I had. I wanted to say thank you all, and I look forward to hearing what the kids have to say and hopefully scaling this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll call Mr. Tom Love. I know I saw you, Tom. There you are. No offense, but I did not expect you to jog to the mic. Welcome. And you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank the the board and and Dr. Bedell in particular for the UV lights that have been put in the HVAC systems. That was my first experiment in Biology 101 that we could choose was to kill bacteria with the UV light. That was kind of fun. The I guess my dream thing when I was a kid, my major in elementary school, was recess. And it's kind of, it's gonna be kind of fun for me to ask school board members and the superintendent for more recess because the sun kills the virus. Isn't that wonderful? I mean, we've got this incredible sunlight. That's what led me to this experiment was I read something in the Bible about if you deal with someone who's sick or dead, you wash your hands of running water, dry them in the sun. And so you can disinfect all the children in just a few minutes out in direct sunlight. Isn't that wonderful? The other thing that I'd like to mention is, you know, people are really, really scared of this virus, and they have reason to be. I've lost some friends and other people who have this major problem breathing. There's something that we can do to improve our immune system that I think there's some people that aren't aware of. The basic thing is to take a multivitamin every day, one that has zinc and D3 in it. Something like Centrum Silver or One a Day. You take that every day, and and then during cold and flu season, if you listen to an infectious disease doctor, they'll say cold and flu season, you should take, is vitamin D3 deficiency season. It's when you're not getting the sunlight, and we're in a higher latitude, and the sunlight causes your skin, it hits your skin, and you, your body just naturally produces D3. That activates your immune system. So when the leaves go off the trees, you should be taking a D3 supplement. If you listen to Dr. Fauci, a reporter mentioned, or asking a specific question, how much D3 do you take? And he says he takes seven thousand units a day. That's a lot. But during cold and flu season, it's a good time to take it. That's when you should be taking an additional above your multivitamin. The third thing is the zinc. The reason the zinc is important, if you have it in your tissues and it takes time to get it in there, it's, the virus is not able to replicate if it's in the cell, if that zinc's in there. That's why you heard, you know, President Trump mention, take hydroxychloroquine as zinc. I doubt if he's had more than Biology 101, but some doctors told him that. The hydroxychloroquine, if I understand it correctly, is an ionifer, and it helps the zinc absorb into the cells quicker. So you can take something called ZICAM, it spells like Z-I-C-A-M, like zinc starts with ZI, and on the box, it tells you it reduces the time you have a virus by forty percent.
Your time's up. Thank you.
So I hope you all, don't be so afraid.
Appreciate it. All right, now we'll ask Ms. Angie Heil to come with our, or Lyle, apologies, to come forward with a report from our district advisory council. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Dr. Bedell and KCPS board, thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation tonight on behalf of the district advisory committee for 2021-2022 school year. This new year brings new officers to the DAC executive board. My name is Angie Lyle, and I have been voted to serve as the 2122 DAC X Chair. My kids attend Lincoln College Prep Academy, where I also serve on the SAC board as a DAC delegate. I'm happy to report the newest members of the DAC X are, in addition to myself, Dion Lewis, a Lincoln College preparatory parent and currently the interim chair for LCPA SAC, Kelly Yelkam, a teacher at Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School, Marari Rubio, a parent at JA Rogers Elementary School. We're also welcoming back existing DAC officers, Steve Burton, Demonte Rochester, and Tiara Trotter. While the new board has not yet had time to have a public meeting for DAC this year, the executive board has met for our annual retreat to go over goals such as helping KCPS to improve communications and equity for all schools, participating in the 2030 blueprint process, and support of KCPS legislative agenda. We also went over our budget and were able to set our calendar. We will be meeting every other month, 6:00 PM, on the third Wednesday of each month, starting September fifteenth, which will be our first public meeting. So our DAC depends on parents, staff, and community members alike to create the best experience KCPS has to offer. We've created subcommittees to help us with various tasks and to also help make sure that we can connect parents and community members to the goals they feel most invested in with KCPS. Those subcommittees are open to volunteers, whether you're a DAC member or just someone who wants to help, so we invite you all to join us. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms. Lyle. Appreciate it. All right, well, now, as you guys are all aware, 2020 census wrapped up last year, and so election bodies across the country are coming together and kicking off their redistricting process at a very accelerated rate, unfortunately. COVID obviously had a huge impact on on the census and gathering that data. But here we are, we find ourselves with a short timeline, as I understand it, but we've welcomed the experts to the board meeting tonight. So we're going to ask Mr., I think it's Mr. Sean. Okay, all right. Sean Kiefer and Dave Raymond to the microphone. Is it Kiefer?
My name's David Raymond. I'm the attorney for the election board.
Okay.
So I'm gonna talk about, well, as you say, the census isn't quite completed yet. We haven't had the data that we can do redistrict being appointed or produced yet to us, but I want to talk a little bit about the restructuring statutes, a little bit about the election board, the Kansas City Board of Election Commissioners, who they are and what they do. I want to talk a little bit about the prior redistrictings that we have done for for the Kansas City Public School District, and then talk about the guidelines that we use to redistrict, talk about the timeline that we have in place based upon the getting data that we can use to redistrict, hopefully by September thirtieth, that's the that's the date now, and then talk a little bit about the process, a little bit about the process. So those are the things that I want to talk about. We also have today with us Sean Kiefer. He's in the back. He is one of the directors, not a commissioner, but one of the directors of the Kansas City Board of Election Commissioners. We also have one of our consultants that's assisting us. Melissa Patterson Hasley is here is here as well. So we're here. So first, the statutes. Missouri Vice Statute 162.492, now I'm gonna bore you. It gives the, and appoints the Kansas City Board of Election Commissioners as the redistricting commission for the Kansas City Public Schools. So every, after every decennial census, the election board is responsible to redistrict the subdistricts based on the current data. So that's under it. Who is the election authority? Who is the board? The Board of Commissioners is appointed by the governor with the advice and consent of the Senate. There are four members, bipartisan board, two Democrats and two Republicans. Currently, we have only three board members. We have one vacancy, and we have the chair is Sarah Sally Miller. The secretary is Sharon Turner Bowie, and our third member is Amy Gramowski. So those are, those are the members of the board. We have then our directors, are Sean Kiefer, who you met, and then we have Lori Elin, who's also met. I know that they've worked closely with the with the secretary of your board in previous elections and all of that to to do the elections. The election, the election authority is tasked with basically two tasks. One is to maintain all the voter registration for the city of Kansas City, that portion of the city of Kansas City within Jackson County. So Platte County, Cass County, or Clay County, that's not under the jurisdiction of the board for Kansas City, Missouri. But that is co-terminous with and the same as the boundaries for the Kansas City, Missouri School District, that portion of Kansas City within Jackson County. In addition to maintaining the voter registration rules, the election authority then conducts all of the elections. So whenever you go to the polls in Kansas City, Missouri, and Jackson County, those are operated by and run by the Kansas City Election Board. One of the other functions that we serve, and it's statutorily mandated, is to serve as the redistricting commission for the Kansas City Public Schools. So I'm not aware of any other election authority in the state of Missouri that has that responsibility or duty that the legislature has put on them, but we do. We have done that, and I've been the attorney for the board since 1994. I've been through four redistrictings of the Kansas City Public Schools. The first one was in 2001, based on the 2000 census. The next one was in 2008. If you recall, the independent school district annexed certain portion of the district. The public schools at that, Kansas City Public Schools at that time, came to the election authority and asked us to redistrict, and we did. So that was in 2008. We then, then the 2011 redistricting based on the 2010 census. And then, if you recall, statutorily, three years ago, when the district was reduced from six subdistricts to five, we also redistricted at that time. So that's just three years ago. So that that's our, kind of our history that we've had. If you look back in the statutes, it looks like that the election commission, the election board, has been the redistricting commission for the Kansas City Public Schools since about the late 60s, 1970. So there's a long history. It's over fifty years that the election commission has had that responsibility and administered that responsibility. So what do we look to in in redistricting? We have three statutory constitutional mandates that we follow, and then we have other guidelines that we use. And those are, they're really pretty simple, and you probably, guys, probably already know these. And that is, all the subdistricts has to be nearly equal in population. One person, one vote. We can't have districts where one vote is outweighed by another vote. So they have to be nearly equal in population. They have to be compact and contiguous. And race cannot be the predominant factor. It can be a factor, and it can be considered, and we will look at racial makeup of the districts, but it cannot be the predominant factor. So then what do we look at as guidelines? And there's a whole, there's a whole list of common sense ideas that the courts have said are appropriate to consider. Those include Those include consistent with existing wards and precinct lines, so you're not, districts aren't crossing those lines, preservation of existing subdistricts, recognition of existing incumbents, so there's no incumbents that are, that are in races with each other, recognition of existing neighborhoods and historical neighborhoods, and historical neighborhoods that are grouped together, recognition of natural boundaries, recognition of streets, recognition of those types of things that historically are used to separate areas, and recognition of other historical and political considerations that don't fall within any of those categories, kind of a common sense approach. So those are what we're looking for when, when we redistrict. What we have done is, we have retained a group of consultants, and Melissa Patterson Hasley is one, she is on the House Redistricting Commission. We also had Edward Grimes, and we also have Matt Dameron, and Matt Dameron is also, I think, on the Senate Redistricting Commission. They assisted the board in the 2018 election, and they are basically our community outreach. They're a community outreach to gather community input, to assess the community input, to work with our demographers, to work with the board, to work with our directors, to get community involvement in, in the process. That's, that's their primary role. And then to look at it, make recommendations, analyze the material, and make recommendations to the board. So we have those, again, the same group that was in place in 2018 have agreed to do it here in, in 2021. What's our timeline? We attempted to start this process back in 2020, you know, the end of the year, thinking that we were going to move forward with it. We, you know, got together with the, with our consultants, made sure that they were on board, and then we got the reports from the US Census Bureau that data was not going to be available. Data was not going to be available, it was, it was, you know, originally in April, then it's usually in March, and then it was in May, and then they said September thirtieth is the date when the data for redistricting will be available. So we may get it early, maybe, but we may not. So we're still five weeks away from having the data to begin the process of redistricting. So once we get the data from that date through, and our goal is November eighteenth, to have our final version of the map presented and approved by the board, so that's roughly a six week period, a little bit longer than, than six weeks, that gives us approximately thirty days before the initial date for the candidates to start filing for the April election for the sub-school districts. That date, I believe, is December twenty first of 2021, so that's roughly thirty days. So it is a compressed timeframe over what we've done in the past, it's a compressed timeframe over what we did in 2018, but we think it's really doable, and we've already started consultations with the consultants, and they, they believe it's doable as well. It's going to take some effort, some cooperation, collaboration to do that, but we think that's, that's absolutely doable. Candidate filing for the April election ends January eighteenth, and then the 2022 election is April fifth of 2022. So that's the dates, September third, November eighteenth, our process, community involvement, development approval, candidate filing date, initial date, December twenty first. So what do we do during that process, that, that six week, roughly six week period? Well, that's when we're going to rely heavily on our consultants to do community outreach. Typically, we have done in the past, three to four community meetings. Many of those have been in collaboration, cooperation with the school district. You've provided us the facilities. I think we did the last time in 2018, we had a public community meeting at Paseo High School, and, and our hope would be that you would offer that to us and support us in doing those goals. We will establish, and likely will be this week, a, a email, a dedicated email for any community input regarding the, the redistricting. It will go to, directly to our consultants, and anybody can, will be able to have an email. We'll put the maps and we'll put all of the, the, you know, data and everything on the Kansas City Election Board website. We can also share that with you and hope that you would have a, you know, he would collaborate and put that on your website as well. We work with the city planning department, we work with other demographers to take the data that we have, and then help us develop, you know, maps and, and temporary maps. Typically, there's, we will develop, you know, again, based on the data that we have, some sample maps, we will get input from the community and other maps from the community, and the goal is then to have a collaboration, community input, and to use our consultants and, and the board and our directors to develop a consensus. It may not be a hundred percent consensus, but to develop a consensus in the community about what the appropriate subdistricting is. Let's see. Again, we'll, we will have probably at least three or four community meetings that will be, you know, noticed and, and take input, we'll have abilities to take input through our email account and through other accounts, we'll accept maps and everything like that. And then finally, on the eighteenth, we will vote on, the, the election commission, the election board will vote on the final approved map, we will then distribute that and make that available to you and, and put it on our website. Really pretty quick, we kind of ran through it pretty quick, but let me know if you've got any questions, glad to ask them. We have Sean here, we also have Melissa here as well.
Mr. Raymond, thank you. One clarifying point, you mentioned having the maps ready for KCPS candidates to file and run. We wouldn't have a new election until April twenty three?
Is it twenty three? So that we have no issue then?
Yeah.
Oh, that's because of the, that's because of the statute that, that redid your, yes.
Moved us from nine to seven.
So there is no issue there?
Yeah, so I think we're good on the timeline perspective there. Lots of good information there, I'll open it up for questions. Ms. Wolfsey.
Thank you for the presentation. The three to four meetings, I'm just kind of remembering how we did this the last time around, so is it, and maybe I didn't quite get this, but that, there'll be, I know we have maps, that we have meetings, the maps will actually be before the, or with the first couple of meetings, correct? Like, you don't go to do community engagement without the maps, is kind of what I'm trying to understand.
What we've done in the past is typically prepared sample maps, and, and we've prepared three or four based on the, the guidelines that I just gave you. So we've prepared three or four based on those guidelines that meet all of the mandatory requirements, all of, all of the, the, you know, kind of common sense requirements that you can take into consideration, and then we've made, presented those, and then had comments on those, and then we've accepted maps from the community and from others.
As a follow-up, just to, so mainly that's, and I'm kind of saying this for the public, but that's so that we have something to look at and provide feedback on. Is my memory correct that before you go to that November eighteenth final map, do we see one more before then? I can't remember how that works.
I mean, we will, well, what I'm, what we will, what we will do is we'll probably set a deadline if somebody wants to submit maps, you know, to, for us to review and consider, because it takes a certain amount of time to verify the data, verify everything that's in it, look, look at it and compare and see how it fits. So we'll probably do that, you know, seven to ten days before the eighteenth, if someone wants to submit a map, we'll, and have us consider it, we'll do it. And then typically, we would have whatever map would be available for a certain period of time before the meeting to vote on it. So it would, it would likely be on our website enough, saying, here are the maps, here are the ones. Now, sometimes we don't know, you know, what, what the board is going to, I mean, I'm not going to prejudge what the board is going to vote on. So it may be that there are two or three maps that, that they, they get to decide between, so we, I won't prejudge them. I think the last time we had two or three maps, is my recollection, that were in consideration.
And the reason I'm trying to get clarity on this for everybody is so we understand, so what can happen is, you know, we have engagement on maps that we see, we all provide feedback, we may even get to see online two maps that are being considered. The board could consider these, and maybe the final, final is, is a combination of maybe two maps, is that? I'm trying to get, make sure everybody understands, kind of.
It could, that could happen, there could be final tweaks that are made, and many, most of the time, those final tweaks would be like a, a historical district. You have, you have split a neighborhood, and, and we didn't know it, and somebody's come up and said, hey, you split this neighborhood, and we said, oh, you're right, and then you may have to make some final adjustments. There could be final adjustments until the, the board approves it, I agree, but what we're trying to do is have it open, have it available, and have it be so that, so that it's transparent. I mean, that's, that's the goal of the process, and to engage the community in the process. So that's the goal.
Mr. Barkett?
Yeah, just to reiterate again, how impactful can community members be during this process in terms of what's important to them and how to make sure we don't miss those important historical boundaries like you talked about? Because as I remember, there are usually two or three people who show up to these public hearings, and their voices kind of get carried pretty far.
I, I think it's just like anything, I mean, that's what our process is designed to elicit, is the community involvement, is the community consensus. And so our hope is, and our goal is, and, and I assume that your hope and goal is as well, that we get that community involvement. We believe that, that we would do a better job in, in choosing the map and having it be accepted by the community if we get that involvement. So I, I echo your, your statements.
Okay, maybe one final question for me then, it sounds like everyone else on the board is good, and you might have said this, Mr. Raymond, so apologies if I missed it, you were talking really fast and I was trying to.
I did talk fast.
No, it's good. So between, let's assume that on nine thirty, you get the data, right? You guys are off and running. At what point will you schedule those, those community engagement events so that we can start getting those dates out there?
And I, I've talked with the consultants about that, and that has yet to be determined, but what they will do would be to have a plan in place that will schedule out that six week period. We may get, and there's some hope that we're going to get the data early, and so we may get it September fifteenth, and if we do, we don't want to be locked in to already having our schedule in place. So that's why we're, that's why we're kind of in a flux period of time, but what we'll do is, and, and I'm sure that they'll be working over the next, you know, five weeks before September thirtieth, to put together a, a plan for how we're, where we're going to do the community meetings, when they're going to do, when the cutoffs are going to be, and how all that process is going to work. So it, it's something that we haven't got to that level yet because we don't exactly know when the data, and it may change if we get the data early.
That makes sense, and I'm assuming, Dr. Bedell, the district would be good with our facilities being used for this as well? Yep, okay, cool. I think we're good, Ms. Raymond, thank you very much, that was helpful.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I think now we turn it over to you, Dr. Bedell, for the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we have two pretty important items under the superintendent's report. One is our monthly marketing update, and, and then we'll give a summer school update of, you know, the experience we had this year with summer school. So for our marketing update, I'll pass it over to Kelly Waichu.
Can you hear me okay with my mask if I present, my mask this evening? Okay, I'm going to make sure our clicker works, and we'll toggle between our, there we go. All right, well, good evening, board, and, Dr. Bedell, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight on our monthly marketing update. We have some slides for you, and then we have a quick presentation from our recommended marketing partner, vendor, at the end of my presentation. This is our quality indicator twelve point five, marketing and communications item in our strategic plan. One of the things we want to talk to you about this evening is history and previous context. You'll see on this slide the items that we covered with you last month, as well as thing, as well as things, is that better, if I speak a little bit closer? As well as things that we've already accomplished from the last time that I spoke with you. So on here, we talked about summer school marketing being complete, we talked about the recruitment pipeline overview with you as a board last month. You had some specific handouts, talked about that recruitment pipeline and that funnel to give you a little bit more clear overview of that process. We also talked about planning for next school year, our marketing partner, Summerfest Parent University, and what we were doing for our opening of school activities and media. Current status of our marketing update include the same items we talked about as far as our toolkits. We're still working on our marketing and recruiting toolkits, communications toolkits, family engagement, partners' education toolkits, to ensure that our principals, our executive team gets those instructions, support pieces, toolkits, as they navigate those plans within their own individual schools. We also talked about part of data dives being a marketing update and enrollment number look, as we integrate that with school leadership data deep dives. We're also looking at our advertising contracts and your consent items this evening, and looking for approval for those with the already approved budget. And then we also conducted our marketing partner RFQ review and selection. Future planning, we are looking to approve that marketing partner in September and have Ms. Holdworth here this evening to go through some items with you prior to that approval. We're continuing to refine our marketing and communications plan, this is our big document where our team gathers at our retreat and make sure that we have goals aligned with strategies and tactics that serve the marketing needs of the school district. KCPS homeroom, you'll recall that last year, KCPS homeroom was a new initiative, started during the pandemic, to provide television, online TV programming for our students K through twelve, actually pre-K through twelve. This season, we're upping our game a little bit, and because our kids are in person, pre-K through twelve, we're really focusing on some pre-K programming for those students and kids and families who might be at home this year. So we're tweaking our teachers to, to really look at lens of pre-K programming as they teach on KCPS homeroom, and we'll also be adding some new elements that look at some CTE programming, kind of a news, daily news program, we're talking about educational issues and items affecting education in Kansas City. And then Blueprint 2030, we have been doing our staff and community engagement since, you know, earlier in the year. These bullet points here really focus in on what we've been doing over the past month, and will be doing in the upcoming month. So as we look at potential scenarios with you as a board, with our staff, with our community, we'll be doing whole engagement in September and October around potential scenarios in our Blueprint 2030 plan. Staff engagement continues with our convocation survey, with our in-person asks when we visit those schools this fall, and we'll be doing targeted engagement. What this means for targeted engagement is as we get to potential scenarios in our plan, we want to make sure that we're looking at specific programming, specific schools that might be affected or impacted, and make sure we're directly talking to those families, to those schools, to staff, to those communities that might be affected by any potential scenario in the blueprint plan. Also, families and student engagement. We are looking at September second, this is a blueprint advisory team meeting, but also looking at student engagement that pop up on their computers as they log in for that day, a couple, couple day period in there, where they get to provide student feedback right on the spot in our schools as they open up and log into their computers that day. And then, as you know, we've invited you all to the Blueprint 2030 advisory meetings, so please join us as you can and provide input and listen during those meetings to see where we're going and what our community is saying to us. The next slide, there we go. Oh, I went too far. Successes. We wanted to talk about successes as it relates to how we served families over the last month preparing for the start of school. As you'll see here in Summerfest, we served over four thousand three hundred families with our free backpacks and school supplies, drive-through session at Summerfest. During this time, we also served a hundred and thirty sports physicals, asthma exams, fifty COVID vaccinations, and twenty-five immunizations. So I wanted you to see the stats related to how we not only served the backpacks and the school supplies, but also the community services with our community partners that joined us for that day. And then parent university, we hosted three parent university sessions, two online and one in person. The Saturday morning session also had about fifty, fifty attendees touring that session, so in total, about a hundred and fifty parents were served through those parent university sessions, talking about infinite campus, the parent portal specifically. Thank you to our technology team and our community engagement team who helped run those really successfully. Convocation was a great success for us, we had a virtual convocation with a virtual parade of schools in which all of our schools had the opportunity to showcase their staff spirit and rise above spirit in a virtual, virtual convocation session. Also, you might have seen some of our socials related to Charlie Hustle, you hopefully already have your Charlie Hustle t-shirt, but we're continuing to run that collaboration where we're actually going to launch a collection of four t-shirts that are KCPS branded, one will be student designed through a student contest, and we will launch those as we get to the winter this year for our staff and for our community and for our families and students. And then first day of school successes, wanted to just provide highlights regarding our media, our. media, our partners that were present with us on the first day. We had every local news affiliate join us for the first day, talked to Dr. Bedell, talked to teachers, talked to students. We had the Chiefs and the Royals with us, too. We had City here, fantastic partners who joined us to welcome kids as they arrived on the first day of school. You have a printout in front of you. I want to make sure you saw the printout in front of you because it's always teeny on this screen. But this is an updated timeline and action plan that's provided to you as an update to our previous month where you had a little bit less of a framework but a little bit more of a shell. So this has some more detail for you from fall to summer '22, talking about specific tactics, strategies, platforms, and vehicles through which we'll be looking at our marketing plan and marketing strategies. Now, we do know that as we hire and bring in our marketing partner, they will have some influence over this and some refinement over this as we work together on our marketing messaging. Barriers. We wanted to look at some barriers from a lens, a couple different lenses this evening. So the first two items relate to turning the tide of declining enrollment numbers and projections. This is something that you're very familiar with as a board that we've been trying to turn for the last couple of years. Also, COVID-19 changes, updates, dynamics on communications, constant communication, constant changes, and how they not only affect enrollment but how they affect what messages our families hear. So this continues to be something that's ever-evolving. You heard Jason talk about Sarah being wonderful and Lauren being wonderful. We do have really good people and plans in place, just continually communicating those, making sure we're being very friendly in how we convey those messages to our families and to our public. And a note here, 1 million students have not enrolled in K-12 public education systems since the pandemic. This is not only again a KCPS issue or challenge, it's also a public ed challenge across the country. Another challenge for us is retaining students across the system. As we update UN enrollment numbers during the next month, we're also going to add those retention rates so that you can see our retention rates across the system as it relates to our enrollment projections and numbers. We continue to talk about the recruiter position. We have one open that we'll be posting soon to make sure that we have recruiters on our team and working on that recruitment pipeline for us. And this last bullet, one thing we wanted to bring up with you is, as we look at the political noise, the political climate right now, the media climate right now, we spend lots of time responding to requests for whether it's sunshine request, whether it's the topic of the day as it relates to public education. And this is a lot of time that we spend trying to provide context, provide content, provide references for our media partners. And just wanted to reiterate that that does take time away from things that we're looking at in our normal, regular plan of what we have to do to make sure we're conveying what KCPS does on a daily basis. So just wanted to make sure I added that in there as a current legislative policy, all kinds of implications in there as barriers. And then action items. We will be seeking marketing partner approval in September. And with that, through our RFQ process, we have selected Ms. Amanda Holdsworth and Holdsworth Communications to advance in that process. And I do have Ms. Holdsworth with us tonight. She's an out-of-state vendor, so she's here joining us via video conference as she did have a prior engagement today, which she couldn't fly in and join us in person, which she really wanted to do. So with that, do we want to do questions before we get to Ms. Holdsworth or do we want to go right to Ms. Holdsworth?
I think it might make sense to just roll right into Ms. Holdsworth.
Okay. Amanda, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. So Ms. Holdsworth has a slide deck that will be brought up that she'll walk through. And let's get that pulled up. And she's going to share her deck. Hi, Amanda. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Oh, thank you for having me. I'm seeing that I have a host-disabled participant screen sharing.
Our team is working on that for you currently, right now.
Well, I really wish I could have been here. I'm actually outside of Detroit and we had an event for some career tech ed partners that we have here in the city. So unfortunately, I couldn't be there, but I hope to be in Kansas City very soon with all of you. All right. Here we go. Can we all see this now?
We can.
Perfect. So I'm going to walk you through, just I know that I don't have too much time, but we want to talk a little bit about our strategic targeted marketing and recruitment enrollment services, and then also about, a little bit more about our agency here. So first of all, we're going to go through our team, our work, our process, and our timeline. So about us, so my team, we're all experienced in educational communication. I myself, which I'll go a little bit of my background, have worked in educational PR, marketing, communications for more than 20 years. We have dozens of national awards. And we're also, in addition to our team here, you see on the left, which the ones that, you know, if we are awarded this, that will be primarily working on this account, I will be the lead. Wasim Hamud is my creative director, so he oversees any creative that we might need to do. And then Gabriela Esposito down at the bottom there, she's our brand journalist, so she works a lot with PR, crafting content, writing. And then as well, in addition to this, we're currently onboarding an additional photographer, a senior enrollment management consultant who has worked with me on a number of accounts, a social media manager, and we're just getting on board this week, a senior public relations specialist who has come to us from a community college environment. This is long. I'm not going to read everything to you here, but what I think is just really important to know with my background is I've spent more than 20 years in school communications. I've done higher ed, both public and private. I've done K through 12, public and private. I've done pre-K. And so it's something that I'm very passionate about. We've consulted for a number of private schools and public school districts across the country, and I currently serve, I'm actually an appointed member on the National Schools' Public Relations Association, the School Communication Benchmarking Project Team. It's a mouthful for diversity, equity, inclusion communications. And I was formerly on the University of Michigan. Again, I was appointed as Officer Research DEI Planning Committee, which was one of the highlights started my research career actually in focusing on diversity, equity, inclusion communications. Also, I've worked in a number of roles in-house, including admissions, PR, communications. The largest school district I was at as in-house was Director of Communications Services for Oakland Schools Michigan, which is the intermediate school district serving 28 school districts in Southeast Michigan. And in addition to my professional experience, my educational experience includes a BSBA in Communications Management and Honors International Studies from Robert Morris University and both a Master of Arts in Strategic Public Relations and a Doctor of Education from the University of Southern California. And I've had my accreditation in public relations since 2008. In addition to this, I've actually also been in the classroom side. I'm a former assistant full-time professor, and so I know what it's like being on both sides of the table. So I want to go over our work very briefly. One of our taglines or our main tagline is educate, advocate, and communicate. And so a lot of the work that we've done in terms of some public school districts as well as career tech ed is that we're really shining a light on the stories of the people within the district and figure out through marketing who their ideal customer avatar is in terms of how are we going to shape their messaging? What are we going to look at? What types of stories are we going to tell? And a lot of this is done through research. And so this is just a few of the examples. I know Kelly has more. You all have examples of these, and if you need anything else, just let me know. But we really focus a lot on telling those stories and just figuring out what the right messaging is for the right target audience. These are some examples of funnels that we've done for different clients. So the Thompson School District, they were opening a new career tech ed center a couple of years ago. And so we created what we call funnels. We had lead magnets, funnels, and these are basically automated emails that go out at different times, admissions. We had retention emails, which you see to the right, which is Oakland Schools Technical Campuses. We called this a hype email because they had a huge drop-off from the time students enrolled in these campuses until the time school started. It was about 40% drop-off, so we created hype emails. So it's something I'm very passionate about is figuring out how to get into the minds of our ideal targets and how to communicate to them. And then just a little bit of PR, only because we're very proud of this from the last week. So we had a client placed in Parents Latina, and then also not only one client but also three other teachers placed in Good Housekeeping's highlight on back to school. So we really run the depth and breadth of communication. So we've got public relations, marketing, storytelling, enrollment management, enrollment marketing, all those components work together. And it'll be my job to work with Kelly and her team to figure out what are the best avenues for the best people that we want to target. So talking about that, our process follows a very traditional type of communications outline for schools, research, strategic communications, planning, implementation, and evaluation. Research is my cup of tea. It's a big reason why I went back to get my doctor in education so I can have the credibility to do it. It's something I'm very passionate about, and I believe that you cannot really shape strong marketing communications plans without it. And that's why I've been very impressed with the KCPS team, the amount of research and data that they have is absolutely phenomenal. I'm very excited at the opportunity to dig even deeper. So what we would start off with is really understand the landscape. My hope is that if this gets approved, that I can get out as soon as possible, spend a few days, possibly a couple of trips, but really getting to understand the landscape. We will audit and review all of your social media channels, your website, marketing and admissions materials, any ads you've done in the past and current, your publications, prior and current recruitment strategies and tactics. And again, what's so exciting is that you already have a lot of this data, but we'll just be looking at it from a different lens and a different perspective. We'll also review your main competitor materials as outlined above, which includes charter, private, parochial, independent, and other, which in this space could include virtual academies that have popped up as well. And then also taking a look at current alumni, parent and student data, employee survey data, and then to see if we need to do any more work in those areas. And this is just a snapshot when we talk about materials audit of what we would do. And so this is an example from OSTC's one campus that they had with recruitment materials, when we actually had everything in our hand, that different recruiters are putting out, different admissions at the front office, what students were getting at their home school. Basically, like it's just old school, lay them on the floor, do a document analysis and taking a look into the brand align, does the message align? Are we using the same logo? Are we using brand colors? Are we using the different languages that we need to be using to target the ideal audience? And so this is just a little, just I thought it was very important to show a little snapshot of how we do that. Again, a lot of content on the slide, but I know that you have this in front of you. Additional research that we would do in terms of enrollment marketing. So we're going to be looking at enrollment figures per grade, per school, enrollment goals per grade, per school, a funding analysis, the admission email open rates. And then the next few, I'm actually very proud of doing this, is I was actually on the Council for Advancement and Support of Educations International Commission on Communications and Marketing about 12 years ago when we developed these ratios. But looking at the time from inquiry to applicant, and that's going to be assessed per marketing channel, as well as a time from inquiry to enrolling. Because that really helps us determine how many touchpoints do we need to have with each person, especially when we're talking about your signature schools? How many times do we need to, whether it's reaching them out via email or phone call or other messaging? We're going to look at cost per inquiry, per marketing channel, cost per applicant, per marketing channel, and cost per enrolled student, per marketing channel, as well as the number of enrollment inquiries, the number of new students enrolled, the percentage of students continuing, which is very important, and the percentage or the number of lead magnets downloads. We use lead magnet a lot in admissions marketing. It's basically a tool that provides more insight into your subject matter expertise and how to be useful to your target audience, and then that actually helps us capture more potential leads. I know that Kelly and her team are already doing this quite extensively, so website and e-newsletter, so the Google Analytics, looking at mobile, looking at PCs, how the site is being assessed. I found this incredibly valuable. In fact, most schools, but particularly when I was at Oakland Schools in Michigan, where we found a large number of potential families accessing via mobile. And then when we were working together with our homeless shelter and also our immigration centers within the county, we found that because most of their clients were accessing via mobile versus via PC because they didn't have that. And of course, this goes back many years to the days of OCR complaints when we were cleaning up our website. And I've just found that that's incredibly valuable when it comes to marketing. And then also e-newsletter, your click-through rates, open rates, sharing engagement, and unsubscribes. Social media, again, I know that this is a lot of what Kelly and your team are already looking at, but we'll be looking at it through a different lens, through Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, and then any other channels that we would like to assess or you would like to assess. And this is a snapshot of when we talk about strategic communications planning. So this is something that we do as our team internally. This is a few years old because it's on Excel. We do mostly things with Google Drive now, so with Google Sheets. But you can't see it very well because this was a client from a few years back, but the purple column there is actually when admissions enrollment date opened, and this was for a public school. And then we have everything coded, week by week for the entire year, segmented out by marketing activities, admissions activities, social media, public relations, events, and other, and then color-coded by who on our team was doing what. So this is the type of organization that we have behind the scenes. So we had different phases, and this was put out with the RFQ, and we're trying to align how this would all work. So we would look at media strategy, and this is, of course, after we're doing our research. So we'd be developing this communications plan, which sounds very small when you see a bullet here, but this is your, the tactics, including grassroots marketing, your messaging, your target audience, you know, how are we going to evaluate this and when? We'll look at creative recommendations, including mock-up designs if they're needed, and we'll also take a look at what Kelly and team are put together, that incredible media strategy, timeline and budget recommendations, you know, should something be moved a little bit? Should it be tweaked? Okay, we've tested this now, let's try this in two months because we found that this worked better, that didn't work as well. And then also looking at developing those lead magnets. This is collateral development in phase two, and this is if we need to go into this, which I think, you know, a refresher probably couldn't hurt anybody, but it doesn't mean that you necessarily have to use it. But the marketing collateral development could include things such as, you know, the admissions materials, could be your folders, your cell sheets, your program sheets, your student profiles or program profiles, e-newsletters. So what do your e-newsletters look like to the community, to counselors, to potential students and families? Do we need to do postcards? So general or event-specific flyers, enrollment and event-specific? Do we need to talk, especially when we're looking at your signature school, the counselor view blocks and branded materials such as folders, letterhead envelopes, and business cards? So it could include any or all of these. It's something that we would assess after the research phase. Also looking at content creation, which since the world kind of went a little bit more remote and virtual, we've seen a huge uptick with a lot of our clients in both the private and public school space as well as in higher ed. Doing blogs or creating additional content based on the recommendations that we're finding and how to attract those specific target audiences by the keyword, by subject matter expertise. We would also do social media templates to promote blog content if we decide to go that route with a blog. What you see in the picture behind you is actually a content creation calendar we just recently did for International University, where we had everything, including target persona, ideal customer avatar, keywords that we're using to describe them, as well as keywords that we wanted to plug into the backend of the website, links to all the assets, including social media. So we get really deep in when we're making these types of recommendations. Phase three, that's the enrollment management and process. So looking at your enrollment funnel scripting and design, your schedule development for this. So is it after initial inquiry, an email gets sent two days later, or is it a phone call within 24 hours? We're going to really try to dive deep and figure out what the best process and schedule is for your district. Also objection scripts that your recruiters can have. So if somebody is not answering the phone, or they're saying, hey, I'm uninterested, or we want to enroll somewhere else, or I didn't get in the signature school that I wanted to get, we'll help develop those objection scripts so that everybody stays on the same message, and then also further that content calendar development. And then finally, which is never final, for those of us who work in communications and marketing, is evaluation. So I know that Kelly and her team are already doing monthly evaluation and looking at the digital tactics and engagement. We'll be doing that as well. And then we look at also ongoing analysis of inquiries enrollment. Where are the inquiries coming from? You know, how, going back to those original ones, you know, from the time they inquire until they enroll, what are we looking at there? Are people coming after three touchpoints? Are they coming after 11 touchpoints? Are they after one? Which marketing tactic is working for which target audience? And then, of course, year-end marketing ROI. We make these recommendations for the entire school year, and then we can, as we assess ongoing throughout the year, we're going to be looking at what could work best for you going into 2022, 2023, based on our own analysis of successes and challenges. So we don't leave you out to dry. We take a look at what's working, what's not. You know, I might say to Kelly in February, we might be getting ready to just send out enrollment package to signature schools, and we'll say, you know what? We spent $250 in Facebook ads and it turned out that that actually is getting you the most fruitful responses, and the people that are enrolling the most, let's try that again for March, or whatever the case might be. Or let's pull money from here, or switch that billboard from this location to that location, let's change up the messaging. So we really try to analyze everything. It's not just an ongoing thing. 20 years ago, when I first started communications, we did it once a year. Now it has to be done on a regular basis. And so this is an overall proposed timeline. So if we are awarded this, and of course, these are all estimations because I'm not exactly sure when everything would get voted on, but if we were to start, say, September 7th, so we just have an estimated start date, we believe it would take our team about three months. And this is, keep in mind, going through doing all the research components, the messaging the messaging components, and developing the communications plan, that we can look at the initial enrollment marketing assets of being delivered to by December 3rd. I know that the signature schools will open up for enrollment, so we would want to have all those main materials ready to go. And not just whether we do print or we do digital, whatever the case is, but we're talking objection scripts, funnels, everything set up. And then anything that we want to look at after, so maybe more extensive enrollment management pipeline based on our analysis, or there are the retention marketing assets. I talked earlier about the hype emails for once a student enrolls to keep them going all year, all excited, throughout the summer. We would look at developing those and delivering them a couple of months later. And then, of course, our evaluations and recommendations through July 1st, 2022. And this just gives a snapshot. This is an estimated time. And, you know, we just never know what might come up. But usually, a research and media strategy, if we devote our full time to this, is about three weeks. And then stage two, or phase two, the collateral development with content creation, four to eight-week process, depending on what's needed. If nothing is needed, obviously, that we can fly through this component. Phase three, which is the enrollment management and process, five to six weeks. Believe it or not, it's a really in-depth process to develop these, what's the perfect email? What's the objection script? Well, let's try this, tweak it, let's A/B test it and go. And then phase four, the evaluation, as I mentioned, ongoing through 2022. And with that, I just want to thank you all very much for your time, and I'd like to open up to questions.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I have a few questions, but I'll open it up to the board. Who wants to start? Ms. Wolfsee, not surprisingly.
Thank you, Kelly, and Ms. Rachel. Thank you very much for the presentation. I can't see, but I am looking forward. I'll tell you, there was so much, and I know you had to go through a lot of it very quickly. But I was actually also texting kind of back and forth a little bit to let Dr. Bedell know. What I'm seeing, at least at this point, is that this is the strategic marketing that we were, at least that I was looking, you know, when we had asked the administration to start working on enrollment and a plan, that this was kind of the direction that we were looking for. So I appreciate the presentation. It seems, I don't really have any questions. I guess the one thing that I would like to know further before the September vote is some specific examples of maybe not necessarily public school K through 12, but where you worked specifically on enrollment and had a goal, and kind of how you either met that goal, or maybe because you do do the evaluation, if it didn't work the way that you wanted it to, maybe how you retooled, and then what the outcome was for that. I think that would be helpful for us. So something along those lines. So appreciate it.
She's nodding. Yes, yes, no problem.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfsee. No other. Ms. Cortez.
So thank you for the time and for the detailed walkthrough. I think one of the questions that I have, and not knowing the districts in Michigan to really know the landscape, can you share with us a little bit about kind of your direct experience in competitive charter, traditional public school environments?
Sure. So, you know, it's very interesting because during my doctoral program, I worked, one of my close classmates was in charter school consulting. So I got to learn a lot about how she evaluates marketing plans and strategies and how they get their funding. And in Michigan, as you can imagine, Betsy DeVos is from Michigan, and she's a charter school proponent. So we had many situations within the districts I served. So the 28 school districts that our ISD served, I was farmed out for crisis communications. And we would often get calls, especially when Mr. DeVos was in office or getting appointed into office, because the national news media would want to come talk about how the charter schools were approaching upon public schools. So it's a very competitive environment in Michigan. It's something that's very interesting to be on the inside of public schools and the discussions around charter school, whether it was, hey, they attended our conference, what are they trying to glean from us? Or let's partner with them, and some school districts look at this because of public charter schools, and see how we can, whether we're reaching the right target audience or you have the better capabilities for it. So when we look at the competitive landscape, and this is, you know, and I have to say, I am very impressed what your school district has done so far in terms of recruiting and branding, because I have to be honest, a lot of even private schools are not up to that level yet. Private schools, which is actually where I started in school communications, they're looking at everything. So we're looking at what are charter schools doing, what are parochial schools doing, what are religious schools doing, what are independent schools doing, what are the micro schools doing? And we developed the analysis of who are their target audiences, how are they messaging to them? What are their enrollment numbers looking like? And so we really do a comparison across the board, try to figure out, you know, are we missing the boat? Are we missing a potential target audience that they're actually getting more of? And it can be very difficult because obviously you can't call up a school necessarily and say, hey, how many students do you really have? And, you know, you just have to kind of rely on what's done publicly in public reporting. But we had that experience here in Michigan. About a third of my team is located in Michigan, so it's something that we've looked at definitely. I hope that answers the question.
It touches on it because here we have a very direct competitive environment between public charters and our traditional system that we are responsible for. The other question that I have is, talk to me about the skillset within your team with regard to multilingual marketing, because it's obviously a big target audience of our marketing efforts.
Sure. So, I mean, you know, you can look at my name, Amanda Holdsworth, which sounds very English. I'm actually immigrant. My first language was not English. And we have several diverse team members here. And so within Oakland County, Michigan, especially the 28 school districts, we had, I believe it was something about 74 different languages spoken. So we would often have to do grassroots marketing campaigns in different languages and understanding what are the demographics, how do we reach them? Are we saying the right things? Because it's not just as easy as a simple Google English to whatever language you're trying to translate in, right? Because you have to look at the cultural norms and the cultural differences, looking at imagery, making sure that it's not offensive, making sure that it's not stepping over the line. So within the team, that's something that we've done pretty extensively. You know, again, it may not look like it, but through my work, especially at the NSPR level, working on these diversity, equity, inclusion committee to develop these benchmarkings for their national standards for public schools through the National Schools Public Relations Association, we have a lot of connections. And if we get to a point where Kelly will say to us, man, we need to dig deeper, I have no problem bringing in somebody else to help out and get you what you need to do. I mean, that's just what we're here, we're here to help the school district. So if it's not on the mark, then we're happy to get what needs to get to that mark.
Thanks. Ms. Bookner? A two-fer? Or a three-fer? Mr. Abarka?
Sure. I'll echo my colleagues. Thanks to you giving us your time today. I guess my question is around, again, diversity, equity, inclusion, and just wanted to understand from your business perspective, what commitment you have and how you've instilled that in your own business practices?
Sure. So we're actually working toward B Corp. And we already have our women-owned business certification, and I am working through B Corp status. And it's something that I'm just very passionate about. I was known when I was at Oakland Schools, for example, for hiring a diverse team. And it's not that I would actually go in blind, not looking at names, just bringing in a team, because I believe that diversity just brings a lot of different experiences that I don't have and definitely some of my team members don't have. So when you sit in a room and you can at least sit and talk about things and work things out and just see it from other people's perspective, it just helps, it just helps bring excellent results. It's something that when I was at the University of Southern California doing my doctorate education, we had a very heavy focus under diversity, equity, inclusion, and equity within education. And it's something that we just bring forward on our team.
I guess my second question is around the geographic location component. It seems like you're kind of based on the Canadian-Michigan border, it sounds like. And so how will you respond quickly to maybe some of the ongoing trends locally or engage in some of those ways? Obviously, we're in a digital environment, but some of the competitors, I imagine, as we approach this process, were here in Kansas City. So how do you kind of bridge that gap?
Well, we work with, I mean, we have clients in Africa, Australia, UK, which we couldn't travel to because of pandemic. Kansas City is less than a two-hour flight for me. We go to clients that, before we even start the research process, you know, we might do a little bit of document analysis. But we go and spend time on the campuses, meeting people within the schools, talking to people. It's a very heavy-duty process. And people who aren't doing the upfront research, whether they're local or not, are not doing you justice by understanding what's happening. Yes, it could be difficult if I'm external, but, you know, the fact that we are in the digital age has not stopped me or any of my team members from interviewing people around the world for our other clients. So I think that, you know, as long as you stay the open communication, and, you know, thus far, I believe that Kelly and her team would be wonderful to work with in terms of, hey, this is going on, take a look at this news. You know, she's a very skilled public relations professional from what I've seen so far. And that's just what we do in our job. We're the eyes and ears of a district or in-house. And then when we are external consultant, it's our job to be the eyes and ears of our clients from the outside, wherever we're located.
Last thing, just to echo my colleague, Jennifer Wolfsee. I would like to see that data as well in terms of the ROI on some of the work that you've done and how you maybe retooled if there's anomalies that you've seen.
All right. Ms. Holdsworth, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, hey, I'll just echo everyone's comments. Thank you for putting in some time with us tonight and all the work you put into your presentation. I just have one question that hasn't been asked already, which is, can you give us some specific examples of where you've worked with communities of color that are highly mobile, both the students and the parents? And what specifically sort of, what sort of outcomes have you seen in working with those communities?
Can you please, like, clarify what you mean by highly mobile? You mean moving around quite a bit?
Correct.
Yeah, here in Oakland County, Michigan, I mean, we have actually a very large homeless population. So we, and immigrant population. So we actually worked a lot with our homeless shelters and immigration centers from the school district side to get communication out to the families who are coming about enrolling, about the different programs that were available to them. Whether it was immigration centers, it was the schools that had the appropriate tools to help their families with the homeless shelters. It was a grassroots marketing campaign we had for them, going all the way down to the preschool level and what we had available. So I've had that experience. And I actually, what I'm in Detroit for is we're running the Manufacturing Day through Wayne Risa, which is ISD for Wayne County, Michigan, which includes Detroit Public Schools. This is the second year of doing that. So we work very extensively with this population, which was, you know, proved to be an interesting challenge last year because of the number of students who couldn't be reached by their schools. You know, Kelly showed that statistic earlier on about the number of students who either weren't enrolled or the students here that were unreachable. So it was something that we had to figure out, how do we develop this digital virtual programming to reach these students who could actually really use it? So we have experience in that area. It's something that I'm pretty passionate about. I work very closely, even with the Education Equity Reporter here in Detroit, to kind of learn more about trends, especially as we're developing our programming. And, you know, it's very interesting with this virtual program that we've put together. We had potential sponsors a couple of months ago say to us, you know, we don't really want to sponsor this because we think kids, the kids should be in school. We don't understand why you're doing it virtually. And we had to go through and explain things such as, you know, vaccination rates in Detroit were low. Student, the student population, we didn't know where a lot of them might have been, so we can't count them to be on the school year. So this way, we can at least reach them. You don't have to be logged in through the school. We can reach them if they're on their mobile phone, if they're on a friend's computer. Wherever they might be, they can access the content.
No, I appreciate that. So let me maybe be a little bit more specific. So can you talk about how you've been able to reach them? So assume a kid is homeless, or the parents are homeless. How do you, have you had experience reaching those populations of people? And if so, you know, what have you seen?
Yeah. So one of the examples we had was, we had a billboard near homeless shelter, and it was to talk about our free preschool program. And so we actually had it translated in two different languages, both sides, with a simple text number for people to text to get more information about the free preschool program. That was, that was, that was pretty successful. And so that was one of the areas, and especially when we talk with homeless too, and you're talking about the homeless shelters. And it's getting the old-school materials right in the hands of the people that can hand it out and reach that population. You know, you can't always solely rely on technology. One of the things, I have to be honest, that I was, I was very surprised about and very naive about when we went into that campaign was, I didn't think that that having things such as texting or digital would work. But it was explained to me by our partners at the homeless shelter. And then we also had consultants in-house who worked with the homeless student population. Often, we're just traveling, even if it's a pay-as-you-go or a low-cost cellphone program. That's what they have. They don't have the computers, and it actually was a lot easier to reach them via text. So hopefully, that answers your question a little bit.
Yeah, that's good. And I appreciate the humility of recognizing that you went into something with one expectation and walked out learning that your expectation was incorrect. So I appreciate that. Ms. Wolfsee.
Sorry. I knew it would get me at some point. I have a couple of follow-up questions, just to add to the list of, if you wouldn't mind, when bringing the information forward to the board. I think it would be helpful to understand in your, some of the past client work that you've done, some of the demographics of the school districts that you've worked with that might be similar to ours. As Ms. Cortez, my colleague mentioned, you know, we are in a highly competitive environment, but we also, we do have a demographic that is very similar to very large school districts. I think you mentioned you're in Detroit, so is that correct?
I'm outside of Detroit, yes.
You're right, outside. Okay. So have you ever worked with Superintendent Viddy at Detroit Public Schools?
No, I wish.
Okay. I was just.
Yeah, I work with, I work with his, the career tech ed side in Detroit now for a virtual event.
Okay. So that would be something of interest, I think, for us to see that, what sort of experience, or I'm sorry, demographics of the school districts you have worked with. And then also something new that I've realized really relates to the challenges that we're having is I recently went through, as a parent, the onboarding or the solicitation process in higher ed. And I noticed how similar it is in the environment that we work in, in a highly competitive environment. And so I'd be curious to know your client experience in higher ed recruitment, if you have any. And also any previous experience, kind of building on my colleague, Manny Abarka's question around, have you worked with local subcontractors in any of your previous engagements? So that's, you don't have to answer that stuff now, but I think it would be helpful for us in having a better understanding of your experience.
Great. Thank you.
All right. I think we're good, Ms. Rachel. Thank you very much. Ms. Holdsworth, thank you for joining us tonight, and I hope to, you know, potentially see you in the future.
Right. Thank you for your time.
All right. Dr. Bedell?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rachel, for that presentation. I want to, at this time, move to the second component of the superintendent's report, and that's our summer school update. I think this summer was a very difficult summer on many fronts. I think as a school district, this was our first summer coming back after being on a virtual summer. I think many of you, as a community, are fully aware of our infinite campus transition that we're going through, and as parents and as board members and community members, we're still engaging in moving forward with this transformation from a student information system. You know, I tell people that I never have a problem admitting when things aren't great. And I could tell you, there were some errors in summer school. We're going to talk about those things tonight. But most importantly, we're going to talk about what is it that we're going to be doing? What's going to be different? What are the steps moving forward to ensure that we don't have some of the miscommunication and some of the issues that occurred? We also want to talk to you all about the fact that we tried a lot of new things this summer. And there were some things that came out of this summer school experience that were really positive, that we're going to be able to build on with the 3,000 or so kids that we were able to serve this summer. So we're going to provide you with some data. We're going to give you the good, the bad, and the ugly. We're going to talk about what those next steps look like, and we'll learn. We've learned a lot from this. I think we will continue to learn as an organization as we continue to try new things. But just know, everybody, we're going through some significant transitions right now in this school system. And infinite campus is one of those pieces. We're trying to revamp our enrollment and do that differently to make it more customer service friendly. And we got things that we have to work through, but I'm not afraid to admit that, and I'm not afraid to be able to share with you all that you're going to hear about some of that and what we've learned as a result. So I'll pass it over to Dr. Davis. We have a team of other staff members that will also serve as co-presenters.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bedell, and good evening to you, as well as to Board Chair Hogan, members of the board. Hogan, members of the board, and audience. This evening for tonight's summer school update, joining me, we have Dr. Angela Sharp, who served as the elementary summer school coordinator, Anthony Holland Jr., who served as the secondary summer school coordinator, Jessica Tagg, who served as our lead point person from the curriculum department and also is our K-12 science coordinator, as well as Dr. Chris McNeil, who is our Director of Career and Technical Education. As Dr. Bedell indicated, we knew that coming off of the pandemic, we, we want, we needed to engage students in the learning that would, you know, try to minimize any regression. But the charge from Dr. Bedell was not to create a program that simply focused on that, that could feel like a punishment for students who attended, but rather to create innovative learning experiences that actually empower and excite the students to engage in summer learning in meaningful and impactful ways. And so we believe that we did create the program that Dr. Bedell asked for, and you'll hear from that from the other leaders on the presentation tonight. You will see the snapshot from our strategic plan where there are five aspirational goals within our strategic plan. We believe that our summer school program touched on each and every one of these. And so as you look at those five goals, success in the early years, summer school touched on that, challenged students and supported them in safe learning environments, we did that, provided opportunities for students to, to continue with growth toward mastery in all subjects, that was achieved, allow students to serve and engage as 21st century critical thinkers and problem solvers. And then lastly, goal five, to create experiences that prepare students for life after high school. The last thing before I bring up Mr. Holland, want to bring your attention to the first graders from James Elementary. Throughout this presentation, you'll see photos of students and their experiences throughout the summer program. We want those pictures in addition to the words on the slides and the words from our presenters to really tell the story. We believe it was a great learning experience for our young people, but we also, within those presentations that you will hear, will be transparent in our lessons learned and how we'll make next summer an even greater experience. So I will turn this over to Mr. Anthony Holland. And everyone might move a little closer, just so we're ready when it's time to.
Good evening. Excuse me, my name is Anthony Holland Jr. and I served as the secondary coordinator. So it's a pleasure to sit here or stand here to present to you, Board Chair, Superintendent, Board Directors. Especially being someone who went through schools here, it was an honor to serve in this capacity. So looking at our key performance indicators, we looked at all the data from our enrollment, our attendance, the pre and post data, our credits that were obtained by our 9th through 12 students, our Senate Bill 19 students, our internships, and our summer graduates to determine the, the outcomes and to appraise our summer school program for this year. And so to provide some historical context, summer school has usually been used to address remediation. And usually that is a punitive measure, as Dr. Davis was saying, that, hey, you have to go to summer school because you are failing. And so the charge for us, even though we're coming off of pandemic, was to provide these unique experiences where students wanted to come to summer school. And so in recent years, it was about, hey, for high schoolers, you missed this credit, you have to earn that credit. And so we want to provide something different. In years past, we also had pre and post test assessments, but we did not do them for K, K through second grade. In previous years, we outsourced a lot of our services to other programs and built partnerships that we had to pay for, for us to address the needs of our students. And then with our summer school enrollment, there, we know that prior to the pandemic, we had about 4,500 students. During the pandemic, which was 2020, we had about 2,700 students. And we're going to address, we're going to look at some of the, the attendance data for this year. Also, we know that our assistant principals, which this was something that was continuous, they, they served as our head principals. So what would change was the fact that those, those, those same assistant principals actually served their buildings. They did not move around the district as, like they didn't use years past. Before Jessica comes up, we want to talk about the current status and what happened during this past year. And so what we saw K through eight, we had about 2,300, 2,400 students. And then 9th and 12th, we had about 834 students. With 834 students, the number looks a little bit low because it was based off of credit attainment. So when it comes to funding, we look, we know that K-8 was funded through State Aid, but our 9th and 12th was funded through the ERSA funds and it is based off of credits attained. So when a student earns a credit, then we are fully funded for that, for that credit. So we're still sifting through the datas to make sure that our students are fully accounted for. But when it comes to those credits that was earned, there are many students that we had to cut off because of the time limit, but we were able to archive that data so they can pick it up back in the fall and they will earn those credits in the fall. So that's a positive. So there will be more students that will be accounted toward that. We know that our summer school was a five-week program as opposed to a four-week program that we've normally done in the past. And it was only 23 student days because we had the holiday. And then we gave the Friday before the holiday as well to provide some type of break for our students and for our teachers. And in years past, we had not served the, the locations that we have, but this, this year, we had 22 locations, which is way more than what we've had in the past, to provide more close locations in the neighborhood for our students so it can be more accessible. And we did not have as many partners. As a matter of fact, we only had three partners as opposed to seven, eight, and nine that were sifting from our district. When it came to elementary school and middle school, what changed with the assessment? We made sure that kindergarten was included along with first and second grade, and Jessica is going to speak more to that. But we focused on those high leverage standards, those foundational skills that the students will need for the next grade, instead of just providing this overall and just, here, we're going to do this and then go to the next thing, then go to the next thing. It was more targeted that Jessica will also explain. With high school, our OSIware program, which was our software that students use to do the self-paced credit recovery, we recovered 1,271 credits with, or half credits, credit units. So basically, there were 1,271 courses, and we know that courses are based off of the semester that were earned by our students, which is a very high number. And based off the average, that's 1.4 credits that was attained by our students. This includes our exploring pathways credits that was earned, and Dr. McNeil is going to speak to that. But the exciting part about it, which I'm glad that we had some board members attend, our summer school commencement, which was wonderful. We had 14 students that would not have graduated in the spring, but they were able to finish their work and they were able to celebrate the summer by graduating. And then with our middle college program, we had 26 more students. And so they did not have to wait till December, they didn't have to wait till next year. We were able to earn those credits and get them to their adulthood. We also, our KCPS departments and classrooms hosted interns, which Dr. McNeil will talk about, and provided real-world experiences with our district. And something new that we wanted to provide was a CTE program that was offered in manual. So you will hear the fact that I came up through this district and we didn't have driver's ed, could have used it. But this year, we had it. And that's very exciting. So despite a lot of the issues that were going on, we had people who were working hard to make sure that this was a meaningful student, experience for our students. And you're going to hear more from our colleagues as we move forward through this presentation. Jessica?
So one thing, one thing that Dr. Bedell mentioned was that we wanted to try something new with summer school this year. And one of those new things that we experienced for students was for K-8 students to participate in service learning. Oh, do you want me to do this off? Okay. And louder. Okay. So for our service learning projects, all kindergarten through eighth grade students were able to participate in something that impacted our local community and/or global community. This was new. We had not done this in the past. We've tried project-based learning, we've tried more problem-based learning, but we haven't tried service learning. We had a lot of really great feedback from students and from teachers. They had fun, teachers felt like it was refreshing that they got to try something new and actually engage in these projects with students. So we had a total of nine projects. Prior to all the COVID restrictions happening to be continued, we were going to allow student choice. And so we actually had projects grouped by grade band, but because we weren't able to mix classes, mixed grade levels, we ended up assigning a service learning project for each of those. So our kindergarten students all participated in a spreading kindness campaign. Our first and second graders and third graders worked with more, not economics, excuse me, environmental type of service learning projects, looking at water pollution, looking at emergency preparedness. Our third graders got to look at fire safety hazards. We know that we have a lot of house fires in our district, so they got to actually look at and create plans on how to evacuate and prevent those. And our first and second grade students were looking at ways to help the environment. So saving trees, looking at the impact of recycling, building birdhouses, things like that. As you move up to fifth through eighth grade, projects became a little bit more intense. Fifth grade engaged in the 1619 project, which really was a social justice-focused project where they got to see themselves represented in history, not only as a mirror and see themselves reflected, but also as windows of where do I go next and what do I do with what's going on in society. Our sixth graders were able to do an entrepreneurship project. And so Mr. Good from Ruby Jeans actually collaborated with them and got to speak with them on behalf of learning about a problem within the community and how he went about solving it. So they were actually able to identify needs within their specific communities, where they're at in their district, and what are some different pitches or different businesses that they could potentially create that would help those within their local community. Seventh grade worked on social justice as well. I do want to highlight our seventh grade real quick because they were the first students in any district in the local Kansas City area to be able to go to the Auschwitz exhibit at Union Station and to also be able to see the testimony exhibit at the Nelson Atkins. In fact, our KCPS students, second and seventh, were the first students back into the Nelson Atkins Museum since COVID hit. So that was really, really cool to see our students be able to engage in that history and within that local context. And then our eighth grade students looked at public health and they looked at a couple different things. So they got down and into the germs, they were looking at bacteria, they grew some bac, it's kind of gross, but they grew some bacteria, they grew some mold, they learned about the spread and different epidemics, different pandemics, and then what really happened with COVID in our local community and how quickly COVID spread and across the country. So not only did our students get to really kind of learn more about themselves and get more voice in community activism, but they got to see that impact that would have on others within their work. The pictures in front of you are just some of the awesome experiences that we have. So you can see our kindergarten, kindergartners from Melcher with the Spreading Kindness Project. They also represented on the previous slide, I'm going to go back. They made kindness rocks. So you may find yourselves walking into some of our elementary schools and see some of these painted rocks that have positive affirmations on them located outside. They're really cool. You'll see our fifth grade students at those bottom picture from Phillips from the 1619 project, they were able to go down to the 18th and Vine Museums and two were those. Going back to the slide with the service learning, so Chris Good did a virtual talk with our students in sixth grade. You'll see students from the Auschwitz exhibit at FLA and then Nelson, Nelson Atkins. Overall total experiences for students, we were able to provide 37 virtual experiences, 49 in-person lessons or guest speakers where they came in and actually interacted with the students, and then a total of 33 field trips for these service learning projects. I want to shift to the academic side. So half of the K-8 students' day was service learning and the other half was academic. As Mr. Holland had stated, we did kind of change how we looked at standards and we looked how we presented curriculum to students this year. Per DUC, our students had to go into their next grade level. So if they just finished a second grade, they had to go into third grade. We know that it's not attainable and it's not realistic to expect students to master these next grade level standards when they haven't actually hit that grade level in the fall. So we made a choice to identify high leverage standards, K-8, this was anywhere from two to five, depending on the content, depending on the grade level of standards that students were engaging in. Teachers were provided curriculum maps that outlined what standards. They were provided proficiency scales, which kind of gives you, gives you that progression of learning or that roadmap. And then they were also provided with kind of the outline of what resources within our district, adopted resources, we highly encourage them to use. They took a pre-test and a post-test. So the data in front of you is going to reflect only those students who took the pre and post. So we know that those totals along the bottom look a little different depending on which assessment, which grade. We did have some students that joined summer school a couple of days later that may have fallen after the window closed. We know that they always start out with math and ELA testing, so those numbers are typically a little higher than science. And we also had a few illuminate hiccups to begin with, getting students logged on with student accounts, teacher accounts, et cetera. But we were able to extend the testing window so those students were able to then take the assessment. But you will see some discrepancies. They're not egregious by any means, but there are a few differences. What we were looking for was just percent improvement. So our goal was to preview these standards. So we, once we get to these standards within the actual calendar school year, we're able to accelerate that learning. So students have already gained that prior knowledge and they're a little bit more familiar with the concepts being presented to them to hope to accelerate how quickly they develop and pick up those concepts. And I'm going to turn it over. And then you'll see our students at the Nelson Atkins making observations about architecture.
Hey, good evening. How's everybody doing?
How are you?
All right, so I'm Dr. Chris McNeil, super excited to be here before you and as the dean and honor to serve. And I want to start off with a moment of gratitude, really want to thank Dr. Bedell and the executive team and also the school board for really helping, helping us with our initiatives and really supporting all our endeavors. So I'll start off, so this summer was really all about creating really cool opportunities for our young people in unique ways. The first piece I want to draw your attention to is first, that cybersecurity and I Spark piece. That is the number that is glaring, so let me go to that first. Here's what we did there. So we, we partnered with, in partnership with the Black Chamber, we partnered to really pilot a cybersecurity program. And we offered those cybersecurity pilots at Manuel Foreign Language Academy, Martin Luther King Elementary, on the middle school side, Central Middle, Lincoln Middle, and Northeast Middle. And then we offered the I Spark program and over the summer at Banneker, Hellcook, James, Melcher, Phillips, and Wheatley Elementary. The next piece I want to go, and then I'll go from top to bottom. So we, over at Manuel Tech, we offered a, did a cool couple of few things. One, we offered driver's ed education this summer, which was really, really cool for our young people. The reason why we did that is because we saw that when we're looking at students getting those IRCs and those post-secondary job opportunities, that one of the huge barriers for us was that driver's education. So we're really trying to pilot that in conjunction with Community College to figure out how we can work that out and eventually scale up there. The second piece, really excited to really highlight is the fact that we did core exploration this summer. This was key. This was an opportunity for us to really impact those 9th through 12th grade students. Typically, we normally touch those 11th and 12th grade students, but our ability to be able to expose our programming at an earlier age, on those earlier high school ages, it really helps us with, with scaling up and giving them those early exposures. In addition, also, we also partnered with Higher KC and helped support 87 of our students participating in internships through them, Entrepreneurship KC with 79. We also had some interns that partnered with T-Mobile and Siemens. But the piece that I'm super excited about, more than anything in all these big names with our, what we did and how we invest in our students within our district. And so over the summer, we, we provided those opportunities and 15 student-paid interns, and that was in, we did peer tutoring, school leadership, equity planning, and real estate department. This was fantastic, right? Here's what this allows us to do, is to give them, the students that real-world experience, but then it also helps us when we go out to pitch these ideas and really engage the business in the, in the, in the private sector, to say, hey, these are the internships and we have our own interns and then we'll be able to work through our systems and essentially scale up in that, in that way. So really excited about that. I wanted to show a quick video, to show you a little bit about what, what summer looked like for us. for us. How was that? That was so amazing to see our young people inside those buildings. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to publicly thank just my teachers who really showed up for us and for our young people this summer and our support staff. So it was really fantastic to have our young people. So teachers, if you're watching, thank you so much for being there for our young people. With that, kind of some lessons learned, like Dr. Bedell said, that, you know, when we're, when we're starting something new, there's some lessons we need to learn to really scale up and really improve what we offer to our young people. Here's our action items, here's what we learned. We want to need to develop an internship onboard and pack it a little bit early, and so we're doing it in October, so we can work through all those internal partners in addition to kind of what it looks like externally. Begin the intern recruiting in January, we need to start that a bit early, and then also determine steps, need to support students without social security number and ID. That was a huge barrier for us, and that's something that we just, we got to get ahead of and really provide these opportunities, equity for our students across the board. That is big. What, in the slides before, what I'm really happy about, just even thinking through just the work that we did this summer, how it's paying off, some initial dividends, looking into just our enrollment numbers, a lot of, some of our students have participated in the summer program and returned back. That is amazing. Also, the second thing is that our students look like and represent our district across the board. So we have students from every walk of life, and that's pretty fantastic. Students who, English is not their first language, are exceptional education students, students who are hearing impaired. This is a place where everybody's welcome and everybody's going to be included and seen and, you know, elevate those times and talents, so I think that's fantastic. So that's the end of my presentation. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sharp.
Hello and good evening. Again, as my colleagues have stated, thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight and just share our wonderful experiences with summer school. You may have noticed somebody that looks a little like me in some of the video. My daughter attended with us here this summer. She has made me promise to bring her back next year. She had a wonderful time, absolutely loved her experience with Dr. McNeil and his team over there at Manuel. If it wasn't for transportation, she would still be with us because she was that excited. She talked about it every day. Enough about me. Something else that we did kind of new this year was the monitoring of instruction, so we wanted to be sure that we were still providing our teachers with some feedback. We also wanted to make sure that our building-level administration, as well as the summer school administration, were in classrooms, doing observations, talking about what they were seeing, and really just continuing that collaboration effort. So instead of doing a more formal observation and making people panic, we created a simple Google form that just captured the number in the classroom, whether or not the teacher in the classroom was certified or a substitute, as we did have some of those, and then the strengths and stretches that they witnessed in the classroom. This allowed for some additional follow-up and some coaching, both for those administrative teams and then for the teaching staff as well. With those observations, we were able to capture a hundred and thirty-three recorded observations and coaching feedbacks. In addition, we were able to provide ongoing intervention support for those students who qualified for summer school with the Senate Bill three nineteen, and all of those students were promoted on to the next grade level. It's not to say that we didn't learn some lessons this year, so some future planning as we have met as a core team and really just discussed some things. We need to staff our summer school early. I believe that this year we thought, oh, everybody was home, they're going to be ready to get back to work. That was really just not the case. They, we had a hard time recruiting our own teachers, even with the pay increase this summer, so we need to make sure that we are staffed appropriately to make sure that we can fill slots with our students according to the highly qualified and certified staff that we need. This will also help make sure that we have permissions out, so as we're using RAS Kids, as we're using Illuminate, as we're using all of those tools in our classrooms, and we need to make sure that staff are, have appropriate access to those and there's no barrier there. And then again, this allows us to fill enrollments to capacity so that our kids all have highly qualified teachers. In addition, as Ms. Power, Ms. Tagg has previously said, the service learning projects were a huge hit with a lot of the staff and students that we talked to. About half of the staff that I talked to, well, the staff that I talked to this summer, not half, the staff that I talked to this summer were very excited about the different opportunity with the service learning projects, and they really felt like it broke up their day. It gave them something to look forward to. They reiterated to me that the kids were a lot more excited. It wasn't just all sit-and-get kinds of material and, you know, the basics. They really felt like they were doing something. We definitely, next year, want to keep the hard deadlines for enrollment. We found that very important to make sure that if we say we're doing something, that we do it. I think that was something we heard a lot last year from our families and community that if we're doing something, stick with it, so we want to make sure that we stick with that hard deadline. Summer school supply requests. We want to make sure that next year, moving forward, that the individuals assigned to the summer schools put in their own orders and they get delivered directly to those buildings. So this year, we did like a mass order, and then we tried to separate it when we got here. It all went out and everybody got their things, but it was a lot more difficult than just having it delivered onsite to those buildings. We also want to make sure that we have a calendar based on this school year. So now that this school year is finalized, we already hopefully have the date set for next school year. That will just make the timeline a lot easier to make sure that we're staffed, to make sure that enrollment information goes out. And then we definitely want to make sure that Manuel Career and Technical Institute is a site for our reporting purposes. This year, we didn't have a site. We didn't have it as a site. We had the students routed kind of back to their own buildings, and that just made some of the reporting more difficult than it needed to be. So moving forward, we do know better. I mean, considering just the start of a timeline for next year, we know that we have to get started earlier. This is a little small here, but we know that we need to have a solid core leadership team from the district. So this year, we had, you know, quite a few people kind of pop in and out to core meetings. Next year, we want that solid core with department representation so that we are a little more streamlined. And then you can just see the ongoing timeline there with some of those, those big rocks that we need to make sure that we get over, including determining site locations, being fully staffed as far as administration goes, making sure that we're getting supplies ordered, and making sure that we're pushing out the marketing and enrollment information early and cutting that deadline. I will turn it back over to Dr. Davis for barriers and closure, and again, we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sharp. Before we shift from the current slide with the timeline, you will see that the dates for next summer's program have already been determined, so we have started on some of the work that you see. And again, we started our planning this year around January. We will begin our planning in October this year, and we will be well ahead of any potential obstacles for the coming year. So tonight, you did hear about experiential learning, experiences and field trips that engage students with many of our community partners, whether it's Union Station, Chris Good, and Ruby Jeans, the Nelson Atkins Museum, amongst others. You also saw that we had high school students serve in our elementary classrooms as mentors and tutors for their younger peers, but you also heard from Dr. McNeil on the many programs that students engaged in with CTE, and you also heard that we have some lessons learned to make next year's program even stronger. Dr. Bedell started off tonight by sharing that our conversion through our SIS did create some early challenges with regard to just ensuring that our rosters were clean, our communication went out, some of our efforts maybe, you know, were pulling from previous semesters. And so some of that, again, that, we cleaned it up within the next, you know, week of summer school. Next year, we know that with the conversion being complete, that it will not impact us in those ways that were technology-related. In addition to those challenges, I do just want to say that for students, the experience was just great. They are likely unaware of any of these challenges that we're mentioning. The learning was great in every school, every classroom that I visited, as well as all the feedback that we saw from all the administrators who visited summer school. So I do want to balance any challenges with the fact that students had a great summer learning experience. For our final barriers, and, you know, this has been known, I believe just a year ago, I want to say September sixth, to be exact, the previous president threatened to pull funding from California schools if they taught the sixteen nineteen project that has continued in our nation's capital, pressure on school districts, and pressure on the current Secretary of Education. We see that in various state houses still, conversation around that, so that is something that is very real for our educators and families, you know, depending on what station you hear, you know, you're hearing all this and then you come to school, and the district is, you know, rolling out these programs because we believe that students deserve to have access to, you know, history as it unveiled. And then also, you heard from Dr. McNeil, we are working on solutions for some of our students who may experience challenges to obtaining summer employment because of the social security. We know the Dream Act has been debated for, you know, close to twenty years, still has not passed, but there are some solutions that we have found, and we will make sure that we not only share those solutions widely with students, but also families, so that we can engage even a larger number of students in the internship process on next year. And with that, and also just want to commend the team that facilitated most of the efforts that you saw this evening, these leaders that were part of this presentation just did a phenomenal job, and I appreciate them, as well as all the leaders and the teachers who served throughout all of our summer school sites this summer. Job well done. And so we'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Davis and team. Any questions? Ms. Putner.
Thank you for that update. I have a few questions. First being, can you describe, how many hours, like in-seat hours minus the specials that kids were in seats in general, in general education classrooms?
So this summer, we had students in for six hours. That includes, that's bail-to-bail, starting bail to end bail, so minus thirty minutes for lunch. I do count the service learning as still continued engagement in learning experiences. It was learning, but the school day was six hours. The service learning was, the trips occurred once per week, and so it could have taken students, I happened to be at several schools when I saw students board the buses, so with travel and the time spent there, may have been two to three hours per week. Of course, Jessica would, okay, she's shaking her head, that's about right, and the rest of the time in classroom.
Okay, so can you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but you made a distinction between project-based learning, problem-based learning, and service learning. Can you describe the difference between those for us?
Yeah, so this, this summer, we focused on, we included in the service learning projects. I'll bring Jessica up to maybe just talk a little bit more about, you know, the service learning in detail, but as we talk about, you know, project-based learning in the past, we have tried various models that did not include, you know, the engagement in solving real-world learning within our partners, whether it's from Ruby Jeans, and I don't know if Jessica's coming up here, but, but through, through our service learning, she'll be able to share what makes this unique in engaging with our partners in this summer's experiences for students.
Okay, so your question was to differentiate between the three, correct?
Yes, because from my understanding, problem-based learning and what you described as service learning are closely related, so I just want clarity on like what this looked like for our students.
Yeah, so with project-based learning, there is that initial, project-based and problem-based are very similar in the aspect that there is some culminating question at the beginning, and then students go through a series of learning activities to solve that question. With service learning, they are engaging in activities and lessons connected to something, some issue going on within the community that they provide service to that typically is through a nonprofit type of lens, if you're looking at the adult side of things. Does that make sense?
To me, it sounds like problem-based learning, and the reason why I'm asking this question is because we talk about our student growth and our student achievement aside from service learning, right? And so I'm thinking about how we can ensure that our students are having enriching experiences and not, that, I'm thinking about how our students are engaging with academia, right? Engaging with our standards. And if, to Dr. Bedell's point, we really want to ensure that they were excited about coming and they really wanted to be there, but ultimately, we want our kids to learn, right? And so my understanding of problem-based learning is that we have an issue and then we integrate those standards, right? So was there any integration or did they have experiences just in service learning?
So there were standards that were integrated into each individual project, and they were math and ELA tied, and at times, depending on the project, they were tied to science as well. Some of those more environmental standards or the public health one had science standards embedded into it. What they were looking for were ways to improve their community around them, so that's where the service learning piece came in, you know, what's going on within their local community or local that impacts the global perspective. So fourth grade was looking at water pollution crisis, looking at pollutants that go into the Missouri River, and then that larger impact, and ways to mitigate those and to help those around. So there was, I would agree, a little bit of pieces of both service learning and problem-based within.
Okay, so most of the time, they were engaged in traditional learning, and then once a week, they went on these learning, the service learning experiences?
No, so there was a separate curriculum. So there was, there was service learning projects that were created by a team of lead teachers, and so what our summer school teachers received were day-by-day Um, and so what our summer school teachers received were day-by-day, um, guides, that this is what they were doing within their service learning project. So every K through eight student engaged in a service learning project for two hours during the course of a school day, and then the other time was more academic-based. They did have their specials, um, seventh and eighth grade did attend those like encore classes, if you will. Um, but they had academic where they focused, where that, in the data from the pre and post-test, that was the academic side with the high-leverage standards, and then two hours a day, they engaged in the service learning project. Um, what Dr. Davis was referring to was when they did go off-site for those thirty-three field trips, um, what that timeframe would have been.
Okay, so the highest leverage standards were really like targeted, traditional learning, and then there were a separate set of standards assessed for the service learning project?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Barker.
Um, yeah, so, awesome stuff, thank you. It was very concise, so thank you, Dr. Davis and team. Um, I, I wondered if there was thought, as we look at, uh, the internship opportunities. Um, as we all know, we have an issue with recruiting diverse teachers. Do we consider engaging in that side of things? And this is why I'll look at Jason too, to say, is there an opportunity there as we're teaching people about all these different topics to put internships in, in that space?
Internships actually for teachers?
Right.
Yeah, so we did, we had, uh, I want to say around seven students, high school students, who served as teacher's aides this summer. And so there were a couple pictures in there where students were kneeled over, elementary students. They, and I saw and met with a few of them this summer during my walkthroughs, and they had a great experience. And these are young people who could be a part of our teacher pipeline in the future. So we want to expand upon that for next year, as Dr. McNeil indicated, but it was a great experience. We want to increase that seven to hopefully fifty as part of our Grow Your Own efforts. And, uh, let me just kind of tag on to that, and honestly, I want to just address part of, uh, Ms. Buckner's question with a part of answer from yours. That, that was, I remember when I met with the team and I just said, listen, you know, these, these students have been through a very difficult year. These teachers have been through a very difficult year. Is there a way that we can come together and put together an experience that would allow for these students to be able to leverage those standards that we need to be focusing on, but to do it in a way where it, it really does give our kids that experience to problem-solving? And really, it was, it really came from one day driving over by Lincoln Middle, and I got out of my truck and I started recording all of this dumping right down the street from Lincoln Middle. And I said, man, wouldn't it be nice if our kids figured out a way to understand the impact of this type of stuff and how it impacts their community and embrace that, include that with their learning, but to also help them begin to figure out how to address social, become social advocates and how to address those social, uh, problems? And, and so it, it really was a full-blown change from the way that we've done summer school in the past, which has generally been focused on just, you know, the academics and not necessarily really giving them that full, well-rounded, well-rounded experience that we want, and almost disguising those standards in a way where they don't even know that they're really learning about science and math and social studies there because we embedded it in the actual practical activities that we want them to do in those projects. And so that's where this whole piece came around, the internships, where we said, okay, we know we got a, an influx of, uh, additional resources. Um, why wouldn't we then look to try to hire some of our students and begin to give them a taste of making money? Um, beginning to, to those industry-recognized credentials that we want our kids to be able to stack, having them to get that real-world learning experience inside of classrooms, working with our students. And honestly, it was something that the Secretary of Education saw, and he retweeted it. This is a great way of a school district utilizing resources to engage students in some real-world learning activity. And that's where it came from, and so being that this was our first year doing this at this scale, those kids that have, that got to benefit off of this, I'm certain have already started telling their friends, and they told me, we're gonna let our friends know about this next year. This thing will probably triple or quadruple for next year, and that's the reason why the early planning and just having a strong system in place is going to be critical. And then being able to make sure that we have a budget to sustain, uh, some of that growth is going to be critical too. Thank you, Dr. Bedell. I, I just truly feel that this summer's experience is one that students want to be a part of, and we have started to redefine what summer school could look like in KCPS, uh, from this twenty-twenty-one. And to your point, this does, I know that, uh, hiring diverse educators is one of our equity priorities. I, I definitely feel this summer school, uh, possibility does support that.
Yeah, thank you for talking about that. A couple, uh, other points, I would love to see opportunities where you're working with trade unions. I saw a lot of the, the carpentry stuff going on. I, I can't tell you how many times I talked to unions who were like, I need students right now, give me students, give me students, we will pay them. So I, I would love to see that as maybe some partners in the future, and if you need help, I'm happy to do that. I'm sure my colleague Rita Cortez can do that as well. Um, maybe something as, as we look at these external experiences, providing polos or some type of appearance, um, enhancing environment could be helpful. Uh, I think that's something that makes our students kind of stand out as well and look more professional, and, and give them that sense of, um, empowerment that, uh, sometimes that can do. Um, the service learning outcomes, I think, I, I love to hear that, you know, they were facing real-world problems. Uh, I think our student DAC equivalent, um, has also brought some of this to us before. I would love to see board proposals for some of this stuff, right? We've talked about recycling a couple times from our students, but yet we don't have a robust district-wide recycling program. So, um, these are things that I would love to see kind of come out of those experiences. And then finally, just again echoing the kind of the balance of giving students and administrators breaks over the holiday, the summer holiday, as well as providing these experiences and getting that balance of as many students that want to be here, be here, but also giving our staff some time off. So, uh, otherwise, I think this is fantastic, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, and all of the, not only the students in the schools through their service learning project that they solve real-world problems, but also the interns at the Board of Education who worked for, uh, Dr. Woodley, Ms. Quinley and others. I had an intern in my office school leadership, uh, they all worked on meaningful projects. And I know the intern that was in the Equity Office actually created a diversity calendar. So we have all of the holidays already mapped out, uh, still have to share that with Kelly's team so we can get it on our website, but, but it, it will be there for everyone to see every single holiday for anything you can think of, a celebration for cultural diversity, and it was developed by an intern. So that's just one of his projects, we put him to work for sure.
Carter Jones.
Yes, thank you, I was really excited to see the, the subjects, and it looked very lively, you know. I know, like you said, after the, the year we had, it was really important that it not just be sitting at your desk doing, you know, bookwork. And so, um, to that, I just, I really, for the past few years, been thinking, we really need to let more people know about this sooner. So I was heartened to see the, the, uh, timeline that you all have and how you seem to have moved up some key deliverables. Um, I, I would just say that I think, and I can't remember where this part fell in your timeline on Slide twenty-seven, but I feel like by January, February, we should have more details about summer school. Um, and when I say we, I mean, you know, parents who are making decisions, because, you know, parents who are on it, by February, they're figuring out where their kid is gonna be in June, May really, you know, where's my kid gonna be as soon as school is out? But sometimes we don't get the details of what KCPS is gonna do until March, and by that point, I've already said, okay, or my kids are telling me, I want to do this. And so I think more, uh, people would take advantage of, they know, kind of more fleshed out, what are the sites gonna be? Um, all of that earlier by, no later than February. And to that point, you know, other thing, one of my observations is that over the past few years, there have been kind of different people who seem to be the face or the lead point person for summer school. And so I'm just, um, curious as to how the transfer of, of knowledge and lessons learned and all of that, how does that go from person to person so that for next year, you know, we'll have retained that?
That is a great question, and it's something that we've talked about, Dr. Bedell and I have been talking about. One of the things that we want to do for summer school, because we have had a change in leadership of summer school each and every year, which has contributed to a lack of continuity of not, basic knowledge about how summer school works. But one of the things we're gonna do is we'll be moving summer school planning and responsibilities under school leadership, because we believe summer school is not, should not be something, uh, totally distant from what happens during the traditional year. Instead, we want it to be a continuation of learning. It may look a little bit different, but it, it deserves the same intensity and laser focus that we would give to the traditional school year. So one of the things we'll be doing is moving, and you see the timeline there where the planning's gonna happen. Key leaders will be a part of that planning, um, to ensure that, um, all voices are at the table around that. And we have had some of that, but because of the change, it's been some inconsistency around that. So we're starting early, we're moving it under school leadership, and it will look a lot different next year in terms of our readiness, so. Although a lot of great things did happen, so I don't want to make it sound like it was negative, a lot of great things did occur, but we know that it's gonna be a little bit different as we move into next year.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. Um, the, the other comment that I had on that was I wondered to what extent the school principals and teachers of students could play a part. You know, one of the things I thought about was, it does feel like a separate process, you know? So the communications you get from, communications, it's all like coming from different people versus if my kid's teacher was saying, hey, your, your summer school that's closest to you is this, take this home, could take it to your parents to consider signing up. I did see some collateral, um, like a flyer or so, but just making more of it streamlined through the people. I already know the parent already engages with these people at the school, versus if you send something to my email, it might go to spam. I know I need to put it on save, uh, or safe or whatever, but, um, I don't remember to do that until, you know what I mean? It just, I just think that maybe we could use the people that people already know, because it's a people business. Um, and so I think that could be helpful, but I really like this improved timeline, and I'm glad to hear that already things are being put into motion, so.
Yes, thank you, and to your earlier point about the marketing happening before February, that is, uh, in our plan. I know that my daughter, who just graduated from, uh, Lincoln Prep, I know that I still receive the newsletters from that school going into the summer planning. So I did see the summer school communication going out from, uh, the school, uh, administration, but we can do a better job of checking to make sure that all schools have a vehicle to disseminate this information amongst their families. So it may have varied school by school, and that's something we can definitely look into and improve upon as part of our action items as well. I think it's important, one of the lessons learned, you have one, two, three, four, five, you have six parents up here, right? And, and this is just the reality of it, right, Manny, you, yeah? So, and, and there are some of us who are guilty because, you know, and it, and it's not, it's not our fault. You made a comment about emails, and sometimes emails go to spam. And so one of the things that we have to figure out, and, and from a communication standpoint, and I think we talked about this earlier today in one of our meetings, how do we make sure that we're touching everybody on every medium of communication? So we can just make sure that, that people, because if we just assume that we sent the email, but then it goes to junk, and we know that that happened with Infinite Campus, right? We, we have concrete examples up here where it went straight to their junk mail, so some parents didn't even know to go in and, and to, and to get their accounts set up. So I do agree with that, that piece, that that's something that we are, um, that we did talk about and will be a part of this process, making sure that we cross every medium, um, because not everybody checked their emails, they just don't.
Just to reiterate that, we did talk about that earlier, just really working, just in general, to provide a more personal touch, um, for our families. And even though, um, we do send emails out, in cases where we can actually call and reach out, we know that that makes a difference. And so that's something we're talking about, um, really looking at how we infuse that in a lot of our work, not just summer school, but how do we make sure we have that more personal touch, um, so that we're not missing our families? You know, having good intentions, sending an email, but for whatever reason, may, we may not be reaching them. Um, the other thing we talked about, I want to talk with Dr. Davis about for summer school, is also adding on a, uh, sort of a, a new teacher boot camp day, so that those teachers who are coming to work for us for summer school that may be new to the district, they're getting intense specialized training, because we have a lot of returning teachers. And so sometimes I think we may take for granted, well, our teachers already know certain things because they work for us throughout the year, but we do hire teachers in from the outside. So we wanted to institute that new teacher boot camp, just like we do for the traditional school year. So we'll have that feature as well, that I think will really help new teachers. We've had, we've gotten feedback from some of those new teachers around things that didn't work for them, and that's an indication to us that they needed even more intense training, so we plan to add that on as well.
Ms. Ford.
Yeah, my only quick question is, uh, and maybe I missed this, if we did any kind of formal assessment of folks that experienced summer school directly, so folks in the building, students and parents, if we did that, and, um, if we don't, definitely suggest that to inform improvements in the future.
Team, did we send a, uh, survey for students? Okay, uh, that may be something we missed this year, uh, that is something traditionally, we have asked not only, uh, students, but also staff to, um, to kind of give us feedback on their experience. Uh, that is something that would definitely occur again next year, and that it has been something traditionally we have done.
Okay, Ms. Cortez.
So, Dr. Davis, I want to echo a number of my colleagues' positive comments, uh, with regard to what I think of as the creativity. I mean, summer school, uh, has to find a balance between fun and learning, um, because otherwise, there are just too many other fun things to do in the course of the summer, right? Um, but, and, and so I want to add some and questions, uh, around some issues that have been of concern. One is how, how we can get kind of a mind, a mind shift around what I'm gonna call yield or stickiness of enrollment. Um, I heard from a number of people in different engagements, uh, this summer. I know we, you know, when we, when we went into the summer, we had five thousand kids signed up, we had almost a thousand on a waitlist, and we ended up with three thousand kids just over involved in summer school. I don't think that's a yield that we, we find reasonable, at least I hope not. Um, and so, in part, some of the conversation that we heard from the marketing consultant, how do we, how do we create that same, that same sense of stickiness from the moment someone enrolls in summer school to ensure that our yield or participation is substantially higher? Because I think if we don't, people just make, people fill in the blanks of silence with their fears, and they make other plans.
Yes, absolutely. The, the variation in the enrollment really stems from the, the processes that we typically would have, you know, from having, say, Tyler, or having a, a functioning SIS, did provide some complications. So, so that's, let's say, for example, enrollment would, would normally be placed directly into an SIS, whereas this year, because our SIS was in the process of being developed and built out for this upcoming fall, enrollment was done on, say, a Google sheet, and later had to be transferred into the SIS as it was developed. That's just one example, but what occurred is, we had a number of students who enrolled, and we did have a waiting list, but when the communication went out to families that was drawing from maybe a previous roster, maybe the spring semester, uh, that's the miscommunication that Dr. Bedell, uh, spoke to, in that some families were told they didn't have a seat when they really did have a seat, and, uh, you know, so it created some, uh, complications with that. And so by the time those families received that original communication, some of them may have gone on to find, uh, other summer experiences. So this summer was really an anomaly, uh, that we kind of got caught in the crossfires of, uh, some of the necessary, you know, transfer of SIS, and so that, that was something that will not occur and had not occurred before. But those are just some of the complications that were unique to technology challenges that we experienced.
One of the things I'd hope that we would think about, though, in making this twelve-month plan around summer school, are touchpoints, so that we know, I mean, there were some people waving their hands at the district, trying to get the attention, saying, we have a problem, and it kind of went into the echo chamber. So I, I would hope that we create a timeline that has enough touchpoints in it with families, so that we know if we have a, we have a miscommunication or we have a break before we get to a point where it's too late to address it. I think that's the, that's the encouragement that in kind of thinking about, you know, our strategy, because we also hear about it, absent Infinite Campus, we hear about it in our conversations around enrollment generally, right? We have, we have X number of people sign up, and we hope to get eighty percent of X, or whatever the number might be. There are ways that we can improve that, the percentage applied to X, if we're intentional about it. But if we're not, we're gonna be, we're always gonna kind of be fighting from behind the curve. So I hope that as we think about summer school, we think about how to not only get families enrolled, but keep them engaged until their student is in summer school.
Yes, absolutely, and thank you, and, uh, point well taken. And, uh, we can and will continue to, to explore ways in which we can send families multiple communications, not just the initial that says, we show that you're enrolled. But, you know, countdown is on, we'll see you in 14 days, seven days, we'll see you tomorrow. And so those touch points we can definitely, uh, improve upon.
You know, I think it, it just, it goes to some of what Dr. Jones was talking about, you know, that this is a much longer curve for families than sometimes it looks like from our perspective. Two other things, and I, I just want to make sure I'm clear, I, I'm, are we going to be setting, again, in the and category on that timeline? Some targets for the number of internships we hope to fill with our kids and just some, some, some metrics? So that you can have a sense of how do we grow this program and how do we get a sense from the, from the strategic view? How do we, how do we know that's happening?
Yeah, so a part of Dr. McNeil's plan is for early engagement and we've already discussed with he and his team, including, uh, his coordinator over, uh, Real World Learning. Where engaging students to where, and families to where they even know these opportunities exist will exponentially increase the numbers. But we will set targets. I know that, uh, Dr. McNeil said five to seven times, but we, we likely in this next year could, uh, see a jump that's higher than that. And to make sure that through engaging counselors and other touch points within the building, that there are more individuals outside of, say, the CTE team and manual. Who can also disseminate that information, explain to students the, the value benefits, you know, uh, earning credit while working. And, you know, so there's so many and, and, and pluses that, that students can learn from and say, oh, okay, I want to come and work for the district. Versus, you know, nothing against McDonald's, but, but, uh, other summer options that they may have if they know early in advance that these exist.
The, the last thing I'd share with you and as I listened to, uh, some of the talk about service learning and some of the projects that we were engaged in. There is an actually an organization here in town that has a, a, a pretty strong, uh, service learning and advocacy, um, piece in the health, kind of healthy community space. That could be a potential resource, I'm not saying a partner, just a resource to understand, you know, what they're doing across a lot of other schools in the region.
Please email that to me and we, you know, uh, in sitting with Jessica and others earlier where we were mapping out potential partners. We'd like to have this organization at the table for next year's planning.
Okay, they're, I'll send it to you, but their name is KC Healthy Kids.
KC?
Healthy Kids.
Healthy Kids, alright, thank you.
Okay, we're going to give, uh, Ms. Wolfsey one more question and then I'm going to ask a few questions and then we're going to move on. Because it's almost nine o'clock and we still have quite a few items to cover.
And I have an additional question too.
Can you, can you email that in, um, to get answers just because it's, it's getting late and everyone?
Yes, I prefer to ask it publicly if we can do that.
I, i- i- is it quick? Okay, alright, go ahead, Ms. Wolf.
Um, I am curious about the development for, um, our teachers, for the, for the staff, the onboarding experience.
The actual professional development day?
For, for summer school.
Yes, I'll ask, uh, Jessica if you will come back up, please.
Yes, I just, I'm, I'm curious about the development of teachers. And the reason why I'm asking is because when we introduce new approaches to learning, um, in order for them to actually work, uh, and with fidelity. There has to be a level of development, so I'm just wondering what that experience was like.
Yeah, so we had two days of professional development prior to summer school starting. Um, there was an optional third day, but that was a teacher workday, so there wasn't actual required PD to go to. Um, very first day of professional development was twofold, it was curriculum-based, it was three-fold, proficiency scale-based, curriculum-based, and then service learning-based. Um, proficiency scales are new to all of our schools this year. Um, we have enhanced, we have pivoted, we've made adjustments to them. Um, so we gave them one hour professional development, um, going over the purpose of the proficiency scale, how to use the proficiency scale to inform instruction, develop those quick checks. Um, informative assessments during the course of the academic period of the day. Um, and then we also had a service learning portion. Um, so our service learning projects, and I touched on it briefly, were developed by lead teachers. So each service learning project was created, written out by two teachers in the district. Um, they were vetted, that we went through a whole process. Um, and so those service learning lead teachers are the ones who led that development. Um, and then I worked with them prior to providing that PD on what that hour of time would look like. Um, so each one of those projects, they went through the course, the sequencing of it, um, what materials they were going to need, what that end outcome would be, what their upcoming either field trips or, um, virtual learning experiences. Guest speakers, what that was going to be, um, and then were able to field questions. So it was great that they were able to actually break off into their individual projects, so teachers could really dig into the work that they would be doing alongside. Um, we also know that sometimes during PD questions come up that are not necessarily just service learning-based. Um, and so there was a member of CIPD in each service learning project to then help support with any kind of overarching summer school questions. Um, but they did get PD on, um, using and navigating through the curriculum maps, which standards, um, resources that they would be using. Um, what that pre and post-assessment was going to look like, information on pulling data from those assessments. Um, so there was a well-rounded, um, set of professional development. And then the next day, um, they were given professional development around Infinite Campus.
Our teachers, correct, on their satisfaction or their comfortability with this type of learning?
I didn't send one out to building.
No, I mean, just in general.
Yes, it appears that we did not, since we, we didn't get an affirmative, that it was something that was on our to-do and so we'll add that to our D brief as to how that.
Yeah, and I think, I don't think it's too late, um, I'll just name for you, like, I think as we look ahead and on improving this method. Because I would hate for us to say, well, that didn't work or it didn't feel good, let's try something else. I think that is incredibly important to survey those, um, those summer school teachers.
And I will tell you, those surveys are created, so we do have to just send them out.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so a couple of things, uh, one, love the CTE stuff, obviously, this is a passion of mine. Um, but man, we have got to move faster with this stuff. I, I can tell you, two to three times a month, I have an organization reach out, I'd love to work with the district, it's challenging, it takes forever, they don't follow up. We have got to fix this stuff, I mean, this is the, to me, this is, all the academic stuff in the, the kid's journey from pre-K through 12, you know? This is probably one of the most important things for our kids to be ready, right? The whole, you know, CCR, college and career, yeah, CCR stuff, right, is focused on this. And we've made good progress, so I don't want to knock the progress, but I, I do feel like we need to accelerate the way in which we onboard new partners, right? And then get those options available, um, particularly, and, and you can, you can prioritize them by the ones that are willing to pay, um, our kids, right? And so I, that's just a passion, not a question, it's just something that, um, it just drives me. Um, and then I'll just say one final thing, uh, because we do need to move on. Look, I, I don't question the passion, the work, the focus, um, on the programming side of what's going on in the district. But the thing that, that really I'm starting to get significantly concerned about is what feels like a lack of systemic operational excellence in this district. And when you talk about enrollment, enrollment's not new, we do enrollment every year, it changes, COVID impacts it. Um, Infinite Campus impacted it, I, I get all of that, but when those things happen, um, and you've got all the resources. This board has given this district every resource you've asked for. I can't remember a contract that we haven't really approved from a resource perspective, right? And we've got a bunch of highly paid, talented staff here and some of the operational stuff is killing us. We live and die by enrollment, it just, it's mind-boggling to me that we transitioned from one system to another and no one was actually checking 100% of that data. It's literally our bread and butter, right? And we've got, it's clear that we've got organizations, teams, departments that aren't collaborating with, with each other, right? Accountability and IT and, and all of these, oh, we waited a couple of weeks before we got involved. We have a systemic problem that I'm not confident that we know how to fix. And if we're not, if we don't fix this soon, we're not going to be around, right? And that's not me being hyperbolic or dramatic, I think that's just a reality that we have to sort of wrap our heads around. And I don't know how to get the team to focus on that stuff.
Am I allowed to?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Yes, yeah, so two great points and we have discussed both of those. Uh, to your first point, we have in some years had, say, a summer school lead that was not divided in, uh, duties. I recall maybe seven, eight, nine years ago, pulling a, an elementary principal out to serve as summer school, a lead. And that was the, uh, focus for that time. Uh, I know that in recent years, we hired a summer school coordinator, uh, since Dr. Bedell has been here. So that we could have someone who focused on summer school and that was that role. And this year, uh, we did not have someone identified, uh, have, well, we, uh, Dr. Collier and I have spoken. We need to return to that where we, we know, and that's what this, that what this is in that early timeline, is establish that summer school lead. I want to say that our summer school coordinators this year did a phenomenal job. They also still had other responsibilities, you know, um, and so those are some things we're going to work through, which will help with the, uh, the planning. As well as starting early. To your point about the conversion, in hindsight, I know that we've had conversations internally that we likely should have kept the, uh, our previous SIS up and running. While we were building, so that there was not, uh, maybe a delay. In fact, there were efforts later on to turn it back on and so forth. I know Dr. Bedell was able to reach out to the contractor to have that, um, have that, uh, put back in place. And so those are some of the things, again, in hindsight, we could have made this conversion a little bit easier. I think that, uh, that's definitely a huge lessons, lessons learned for whenever we get back to that, uh, conversion again. Whether it's another five years from now and so forth, that we, uh, not, not have a, a gap.
Okay, thank you, I'm, I'm off my soapbox now, thanks for the, the presentation tonight, Dr. Davis.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, I think that concludes your superintendent's report, Dr. Bedell.
It does.
Okay, we'll move over to, oh, do a quick review of action items, um, from the August 11th board meeting.
Okay, the, the action items are actually located on the, um, agenda and you'll see a, an attachment to the action item. The action item from the last meeting, um, this was by Ms. Cortez, asked this question, or I believe it was. The Board of Directors would like a map to visualize which student mentoring programs are at which of our schools? And which of our schools still need partners? Is that correct? Thank you.
Have we received that information? That one, that one's further out, okay, okay.
There was no expectation, uh, for that to be done at this point.
Okay, that was the only one, okay, perfect. Okay, we'll move into the treasurer's report, Mr. Abarka.
It's really, really boring, uh, today because it's the beginning of our fiscal year, so there's not much, uh, put into our systems yet. Um, and so as most of our expenditures, expenditures accrue back into the prior year and revenues do not come in hardly at all, you're not going to see much, um.
Mr. Abarka, excuse me, um, gentleman in the back, could I have control of this clicker, please?
That'd be the great and powerful Oz.
There we go, okay.
Alright, and just FYI, my name is not.
I don't believe I have control yet, Kyle.
Manual like a book, not manual like a person.
It's on. There we go, I got it.
Alright, perfect, so, uh, again, as you'll see, um, there's not going to be much activity here because as we start the fiscal year, there's not much in or out at this moment. Um, keep track of, on the right-hand side, as we move to the next slides, the percentage of, um, each of these line items that has been spent. Obviously, we're at zero as we start the year. So, uh, there's really little to denote, fund balance, um, as we look at the beginning, fund balance. We will not be, um, accurate until we finish our accruals, year-end closeouts, uh, in August, so it represents a very high, it, they represent very high here. We will adjust as the numbers become more final. Looking at our revenue slide, the revenue streams for KCPS is very low in summer months due to our high reliance on local property tax revenues. Um, looking at our pie chart here on revenues, there we go. Uh, shows us that 75% of our revenue is from local sources, 23% from the federal side, uh, which is, uh, usually higher or is higher this year because of our SR2 budgeted funds. As we look at salaries and benefits, they equal to 63% of our budget. July salary and benefit costs are low as the majority of amounts paid in July relate to the prior year. Um, and since we are accrual, they accrue back into this last year. Um, purchase services, property and liability insurance have been paid for the year, um, so big expenses there. Uh, property insurance came in over budget due to the national market trends in school insurance. Um, as we look at our cash and investment report, trying to go quickly here, so thanks Linda for keeping up. Uh, our investments remain steady and low yielding due to the current interest rate market at this point. So with that, that is the treasurer's report.
Wow, that was record speed, thank you, Mr. Abarka, I'm sure the audience appreciates that. Alright, do we have any reports from ad hoc committees? None at all? Nope, okay, I think we're good. Alright, well then we can move into regular business items and I think, I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the guys in the back who were here to participate in that. You're super patient, um, so appreciate it and apologies for the delay. So I think, uh, Ms. Quinley, you're gonna, are you gonna get up and introduce her, Dr. Bedell?
Yeah, I'll bring him up, Mr. Chair. So, um, the first item that we're asking the board to take action on is refinancing of the 2015 equipment lease, uh, purchase debt agreement. Uh, which will result in interest savings of $936,827. For that item, I will ask Ms. Quinley to present this item and introduce our guests.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair and Board Members. Um, I am pleased and also apologetic to our guests that this has been a long night. But I, we have with us, um, our representatives from Piper Sandler, who serve as the district's financial advisors. And from Gilmore and Bell, who serve as bond counsel for us. And some of you have had the opportunity to meet with them before, but I'll ask Mr. Todd Goffey of Piper to come up and just walk you just very briefly through, um, the refinance itself. And then we have bond counsel if you have those real technical questions. But we are pleased to have had the opportunity to refinance this at a significant savings for us going forward, so, Mr. Goffey.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Bedell, uh, pleasure to be with you tonight. As Linda outlined, this is really something that we started monitoring about two years ago. And as you all know and, and read, rates have, have just continued to come down for about the last three or four years. And so that's presented an opportunity to go back and refinance the 2015 lease that was done, uh, for various HVAC improvements. When the lease was originally done, it was at three and a half percent, we thought that was very low at the time and it was, but rates are, are lower. And so through some discussions, uh, with the market, uh, and other lenders, we've looked, uh, been able to obtain a rate, uh, from Bank of America. By going back and amending the original agreement to get that down to 2.19%. And so the, the savings on, on 17.9 million dollars from that outstanding loan amount, uh, as Dr. Bedell indicated, is just over $900,000. We've, uh, left the final maturity the same, so it's not extending the term, it's going to be paid back, uh, over the same term. Uh, the final payment will be June of 2030. Uh, so in essence, you're, you'll be saving about $100,000 a year for the next nine years, uh, for a total of, of $900,000.
Any questions? Doesn't sound like it, okay. Um, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools for approval of a res- resolution of the Board of Directors? Um, authorizing the execution and delivery of an amended and restated equipment lease purchase agreement with respect to the acquisition, purchase, financing and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit?
So moved?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
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 Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes.
Alright, next item is A-List LLC Amendment of $64,500. This will allow for the continuance of a contract integration specialist to support the technology services team. These are costs of supporting the technology services operating budget.
Any questions? Nope, okay. Well, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of the agreement with A-List LLC?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and June will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. The third item is Vasquez Commercial Contracting Contract for $1,536,596. And this is for the approval of a contract for HVAC improvements at the Woodland Newcomers Center, funded by SER II funds, pending state approval, for capital project funds as budgeted. There's also a secondary piece of this contract for installation of hand-washing sinks and restrooms in pre-K classrooms funded by the Head Start grant. This contract is 64% minority business-owned.
Any questions?
I was just gonna make a comment, and I wanna thank Ms. Quinley and her team because I know we often give you all grief about our MBE/WBE purchasing, and this is a great contract, thank you.
I would echo that.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve Phase II renovations at Woodland Early Learning and Newcomers Center with Vasquez Commercial Contracting LLC?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and June will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is the Greater KC Link in KCPS-Caring Communities Funding Agreement for $580,530. We're asking the board to take action on that contract.
Any questions?
Some moved.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Link 21st Century Cohort 12 Funding Agreement with Greater KC Link?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and June will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes.
Alright, next item is Educational-Based Services, EBS Service Agreement, not to exceed $2,190,000. This is for substitute staffing for our exceptional education department for this school year.
Any questions? Alright, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the service agreement with EBS?
Some moved.
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Mr., whoops, Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes, the motion passes.
The sixth item is KC Cold Storage Emergency Justification, not to exceed $250,000. Think you all are familiar with the changes we've had to make with our vendor for food services. This agreement will allow us to move our stored cold items out of our previous vendor storage and use throughout the year, and this is supporting our child nutrition services budget.
Alright, any questions? Alright, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to authorize the emergency justification form with KC Cold Storage?
Some moved.
Second.
Alright, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes, the motion passes.
The seventh item, Wayside Publishing Purchases, not to exceed $674,654.45. The administration requests approval of this agreement for purchases of foreign language curriculums from Wayside Publishing.
Questions? Alright, is there a motion to approve this recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the agreement between the district and Wayside to provide French and Spanish digital and hard copy teacher editions?
Some moved.
Second.
Alright, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes, the motion passes.
Alright, and the last several items are our special education outsourcing contracts, starting with Niles Home for Children contract, not to exceed $340,000.
Questions? Alright, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the service agreement with Niles Home for Children?
Some moved.
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes, the motion passes.
Alright, number nine, Children's Center for Visually Impaired Contract, not to exceed $854,000.
Questions? Alright, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the service agreement with the Children's Center for the Visually Impaired?
Some moved.
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes, the motion passes.
Alright, the administration requests the approval of the Sherwood Center contract, not to exceed $700,000.
Questions? Alright, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2122 service agreement with Sherwood Center?
Second.
June, will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes, the motion passes.
Alright, and the last item that the board's requesting, that the administration's requesting action on from the board is Rainbow Center contract, not to exceed $430,000.
Questions? Alright, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2122 service agreement with the Rainbow Center?
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and June will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes, the motion passes. And we move on to consent. Any questions on consent agenda? Alright, um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second.
Alright, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes, the motion passes. Alright, and our final action for tonight, June, will you please review action items from tonight?
Okay, the first four were directed to Ms. Whatchill, provide specific examples of where you worked on enrollment, this is for Ms. Holdsworth, of where you worked on enrollment, had goals, and how you met the goals. If the goals were not met, how you retooled, and what was the outcome of that effort? Is that correct, Ms. Wolsey? I believe that was yours. That may be similar to our demographics.
Yes.
Okay, the third one, also, would like to know what client experiences in higher education Ms. Holdsworth may have.
Higher education recruitment specifically.
Higher education, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, then the next one was Mr. Abarka's question, have you worked with local subcontractors in previous engagements? That was yours as well, sorry. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. The next is a summer school question. I need to make mine. Manny suggested several things that would be good for the students who were engaged in the summer programs. You said like three or four items, like polo shirt, said some things which I did not get, I'll re-listen and pull those items out. That was a little fast. Another summer school request, Ms. Cortez, in making the 12-month plan on summer school, list the touchpoints with families so that we know that we have a, so that we know when we have a miscommunication or a break in communication, we can address it. Is that about what you asked?
Yeah, it was more of a suggestion as opposed to a plan.
Okay.
As a plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
Um, the January, February, more details about summer school. Dr. Jones felt that we need to have the information about the summer school out later than, so that's a suggestion as well. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Alright, thank you, June. Well, we are formally adjourned now, thank you guys, have a safe night.